Oh, first, we have no action or nothing to report from our closed session earlier this evening. Councilmember Goddard, would you like to read the land acknowledgement?
Oh, yes, I would. Thank you, Mayor. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewoc people of present-day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging.
Thank you. Meeting protocol: The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profound language or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. The council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. Announcements. Let's see, we still have a handful of vacancies. One on the Planning Commission. The deadline has been extended to April 25th. We are still seeking members for the Community Emergency Preparedness Committee. We just appointed two committee members to the Climate Action Committee, so that's very exciting. We still have a couple of vacancies there. One vacancy on the Park and Rec Commission, one vacancy on the Volunteer Board. Our Fairfax Food Pantry continues to serve every Saturday morning, 8:00 to 10:00, at the Fairfax Community Church. And to receive our town newsletters and updates by mail, please visit thetownoffairfax.org to subscribe. Renee, I believe you had an announcement?
I did. I wanted to reiterate our continuation of item number 20. I see many business owners on the list. I know people were interested in coming to speak to that item. This is item number 20. Considering design guidelines for the outdoor dining structures, we have continued that item until the April meeting. Thank you. And the other announcement was about one of the committees and vacancies, that is, for the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Quick update: We appreciate the applications that we have received. We are in the process of advertising for a part-time coordinator for that committee and for our NRGs and FireWise and other emergency preparedness community organizations. So that is why you have not been invited to be interviewed. We have your applications. Rest assured, we're in the process of hiring the coordinator, and we will be back to you to schedule interviews. And thank you. Appreciate your stepping up and applying.
Thank you. Any other announcements from the council? No? Okay. So with that, I would like to move on to our introductions. It's a very exciting evening as far as introductions. This evening, we have Heather Abrams, her first meeting, her second day on the job. And our interim town manager, Adam Politzer, will do the honors here of administering the oath of office. And I'll hand that over to you, Adam.
Actually, that'll go to Michelle.
Okay. And then Michelle handed it back to me?
That's correct.
Okay.
Hi, this is Michelle Gardner, town clerk, and I would like to administer the oath of office to Heather Abrams, our new town manager. Welcome. So if you could raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Heather Abrams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you. That's it.
So for the benefit of the public, I wanted to share a little bit about Heather, and then we'll take open comment. But I think we've shared in the past that we had a very, very strong candidate pool, and we just feel so fortunate to have Heather be joining us, such a strong leader with such a strong background and with skills. So Heather is a graduate of University of California, Berkeley. She completed an executive certificate in public leadership at the Harvard Kennedy School. She got her MBA at Cal State University, Monterey Bay. She serves as president on the Board of California Women Leading Governments and a member of the International City County Management Association of Scholarships and Events Committee. So she has 20 years of experience managing operations and programs for local government and has a varied perspective as a result of also working in the private sector, a large multinational corporation, also owning her own small business and working for Bay Area local governments. So for the past five years, she's served as general manager for the TAM Community Service District near Mill Valley, otherwise known as TAM Valley. And she also served as sustainability manager for the city of Menlo Park. And honestly, the list goes on. So I'm going to stop there, but I just want to offer you heartfelt congratulations and welcome on behalf of this council and the town. We are delighted and honored. And with that, I'm going to open it up to public comment.
I see one raised hand, and that is Jody Timms. You're unmuted now.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor, and Heather, and Sean. I'm really glad everyone is there tonight. And I chair the Age Friendly Fairfax Committee, and I just want to mention a couple of quick things about that. I was recently informed by somebody in the community that they understood the older adult population over 65 in Fairfax to be 10%. That's not true. And I just want to be sure folks are aware, about a quarter of the people who live in Fairfax are over 60 years old. You don't always see us all out because sometimes the environment's not conducive, but I just wanted to be sure folks were clear about that. Another one of our initiatives in Age Friendly Fairfax has been the flags that are at the corner of Bellinas and Broadway, the little orange flags for crossing the street, and they're there so folks can take them and carry them and be seen clearly. We keep buying them, and they keep disappearing. So I would just really like to encourage community members, please don't take those flags that are on those corners. They're really meant for safety for anyone of any age.
Jody, I'm sorry. This is public comment on the introduction of Heather Abrams.
Oh, goodness.
It's okay. It's a complex agenda this evening, so we're going to support each other through it. But if you have any comments related to Heather, I'd ask that you hold those for later on in the agenda.
Okay, well, welcome to Heather. Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I'm happy to be here.
You'll get to know Jody. She's very active in our community and comes to every meeting.
Yes, maybe I should just restate what the mayor said, that this is the public comment just for this item that we're on, which is introducing our new town manager. And if you would like to speak on something else, you would wait until that item comes up on the agenda. So, okay. The next person is Sandy Hanscher. You're unmuted now. You might have to unmute yourself.
Yes, there I am. And am I on video as well?
No.
Okay. Okay, so there are two of us here tonight, me, Sandy Hanscher, and Mark Solomons, who are...
I'm going to interrupt you. Are you here to speak on 2282 and the letter of support?
Yes.
Okay, we are taking public comment right now on Heather Abrams.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I missed it.
That's okay.
Okay. Again, if your hand is raised and you want to speak on any item besides our new town manager, please lower your hand because this is only to welcome Heather. Okay. Mimi Newton, I've unmuted you.
Okay, I want to speak about something other than Heather. No, I'm teasing. Heather, Mimi Newton, I'm on the Planning Commission, and I just want to say welcome. It's so exciting to have you here and especially to you start during Women's History Month in the month of March. And, you know, I'm really excited. I think that, you know, seeing a woman in this position is just wonderful, and I'm looking forward to meeting you and getting to know you. Thanks and welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, that worked. The next speaker is David Smadbeck, and you're unmuted now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Dave Smadbeck, the Executive Director of the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce, and want to welcome you, Heather, for coming. We're very excited to work with you. And there's a lot of issues for us to deal with. I'll leave it at that. But I'm looking forward to meeting you.
Thank you, David.
The next speaker is Richard Applebaum. You're unmuted now.
I just wanted to take one moment to say welcome aboard. I'm really looking forward to new energy and a new perspective in the town manager role in our town. And it's a unique place, and you'll find that out very quickly. Thank you for coming to our town.
Thank you, Richard.
Next is Liesel Blash. You're unmuted.
Hi, I just wanted to say welcome, Heather. I'm really excited that you have, that you're here in the first place, but also that you have some background in sustainability issues. Fairfax is very committed to sustainability, and I'm a former board member of Sustainable Fairfax, and I'm also on the Town's Affordable Housing Committee, and just want to welcome you here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Liesel.
And the next speaker is Michael McIntosh. You're unmuted now. Michael McIntosh, we can't hear you, although I see that you're unmuted.
Does that improve it?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just want to say Heather, it's a pleasure meeting you today at lunch with Stephanie and Adam. And my daughter told me that she got to meet you last week, and we look forward to seeing you at the town. Thank you. Have a wonderful meeting tonight.
And that is the last of the public comments, although I do see that Chief Tabaranza has his hand up.
Chief Tabaranza.
Yes, I do. Hi, Heather. I just, Chief of Police Rico Tabaranza, just want to say hi. Again, congratulations on your new appointment for the Town of Fairfax as a town manager. I know you're well qualified and capable to bring forth new energy and new ideas to the town. On behalf of the men and women of the Fairfax Police Department, we want to welcome you and thank you for taking on this role, and such an important role for this town of Fairfax. So congratulations, and we look forward to serving with you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, closing public comment, as I see no more hands.
I'd like to also welcome you, Heather, and really looking forward to the work we can do together with the council and their amazing, growing, and continuing excellent staff and all the incredible people in this town. We're going to keep making this place as amazing as it can be.
Heather, would you like to share any words?
Well, I would just like to say thank you to everyone, and I'm really excited to be here. And day two is just as great as day one, so we're going to keep going that way and really looking forward to working with all of you in the town and on the council and in the staff.
Terrific. Thank you. Okay, with that, we have another exciting introduction to new staff. Climate Action Coordinator Sean Yora and Administrative Analyst Lorena Barrera. And Heather, I believe you're doing the honors.
I am, yes. Thank you. So first, I'll introduce you to Sean Yora. He is so well qualified, and we are really excited to have him as our Climate Action Coordinator. Sean already has two master's degrees, both in biomedical engineering and also in environmental science. So he comes very well-trained, and he has experience already implementing climate action plans. We are doing a really nice shared services model with him, working with the Town of San Anselmo. So he's working on both of our towns' climate action plans. He's already met with the Climate Action Committee and several of you, if not all of you. And so I just wanted to welcome him and allow him to say a couple of words. But we're just really excited, and I think the town will be well-served in the near and long future with Sean.
Thanks so much, Heather, and good evening, councilmembers, Vice Mayor Cutrone and Mayor Holman and the community of Fairfax that may be listening right now. As Heather mentioned, I will be the new, brand-new Climate Action Coordinator, representing both the towns of Fairfax and San Anselmo. And I'm just so excited to be doing this work and working on the most challenging issue of our time and probably for future generations to come. And I really believe Fairfax and San Anselmo can remain a model for Marin, and Marin can be a model for California, and California can be a model for the country. So to those that, you know, might say we can't make a difference here, I respectfully disagree. And that's why I'm so excited to do this work. So thank you.
You're here. Okay, I'm going to open it up to public comment for... Or did you want to go to Lorena next, and we can take public comment on... I'll do either way.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll introduce Lorena next, and then you can take public comment on both. I think that'll be appropriate. So Lorena Barrera is here, and I just wanted to give you a little background on her. I know you saw her excellent presentation in October on some of our DEI work that we're going to be doing in the future, so diversity, equity, inclusion. She is also coming to us via a shared services model. So we're very pleased to be able to share her expertise and energy with the Town of Corder Madera. She is already a management analyst and has worked in the town clerk's office. Will be doing some work also with our finance office and is really a really strong analytical mind, someone who really gets a lot done. And I am looking forward to watching her career grow as she moves on until eventually she'll be the town manager. So Lorena?
Thank you so much for that introduction. Good evening, councilmembers, vice mayor, mayor, and residents of Fairfax. I just want to quickly say that I'm super excited to be a part of this great team, and I'm looking forward to working with the community on these important opportunities. Thank you for having me again, and a special thank you to interim town manager Adam Politzer for initiating this opportunity in my career. Sorry, I got a little nervous, but this is a super exciting time for me, and I'm really looking forward to working with you all. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Okay, let's open public comment on these two introductions to staff. If you'd like to offer a comment, please raise your hand now.
I see Veronica Garrett. Sorry, Garrett's got it wrong.
Go ahead, Veronica.
Don't worry, Michelle. Thank you. Hi, council, and welcome Heather and Sean and Lorena. And I really wanted to make sure to say I'm really excited, Lorena, that we have gotten to fold you in fully. What a gift. When you took the time to prepare the Racial Equity and Social Justice Program and Initiatives for the town for our consideration, I was blown away, as were the other members of the Racial Equity and Social Justice Committee at that time, to hear and see the passion and care and the expertise that you're bringing to this. And I'm just really looking forward to seeing how we get to move forward with that, with you fully on board. So, welcome.
And the next speaker is Liesel Blash. You're unmuted now.
Hi. So again, I'm really glad to see that we're using this model of shared staffing. I think it's really wonderful and efficient. I'm pleased that we're making this commitment to climate action at this time when we're seeing catastrophic impacts of climate change on a very local level. So that's great. I don't know Sean, I haven't talked to him, but I'm really glad that he's here, and I want to welcome him. I'm also so pleased that Lorena will be joining us on a more permanent basis. I was just so impressed in talking with Lorena about DEI issues. She quickly took the lead here and efficiently and effectively developed strategies to address racial equity and social justice issues in town. So I just think she'll be a wonderful addition to our town staff. So this is a really exciting night, and thanks, everybody, for bringing us the new staff and looking forward to some new energy in town. Thank you.
Thanks, Liesel.
The next speaker is Jody Timms. Jody, you're unmuted.
Good evening again. This time, I want to welcome Lorena. As you may have heard, I'm an advocate, a strong advocate, for older adults in Fairfax and our disabled and AFN folks. So I look forward to perhaps interacting with you on that front. And then, of course, I also want to welcome Sean. Some of us worked hard to get that position created, and it was really delightful to get your email, Sean, inviting me to have lunch, and we had a delightful meal and conversation at Mas Masas. So welcome, and I look forward very much to working with both of you in the pursuing years. Thanks.
Thanks, Jody.
And that looks like the end of public comment, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment, and there's no further action other than...
Actually, one hand popped up.
Couple of hands. Tabaranza, would you like to comment? I'm sorry. Oh, but...
I just want to say congratulations to Sean and Lorena. It was a pleasure to meet you, Sean, the other week, and I look forward to working with you as far as the EV structure for the town here and the town fleet for the police department. And Lorena, what a pleasure to have you back again. It was a pleasure to work with you a couple of months ago on our project, and just excited for the future for Fairfax. So thank you for joining, too. Congratulations.
Thank you. Michelle, are you saying that there was a couple of hands before I closed the comment?
Yeah, a hand went up as I said it, and then, yeah. Are you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. So Gwen White and Wendellin Bird, and we'll start with Gwen. You're unmuted now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you. I'm sorry to hop on here late. I've been meaning to speak to the council about PG&E and the smart...
I'm sorry, we're speaking about the introductions to staff, so if you could hold off your commentary when we have open comment for items not on the agenda, thank you.
Okay, and, oops, I just lost Wendellin. There she is. Wendellin Bird, you're unmuted now. Yeah.
So I'm a little confused. Is this a time where we talk about... I was invited to talk, give my thoughts about the rent?
No, no, you will. There will be a time for that. So, thank you. We're talking about introductions to staff right now. Okay, Vice Mayor Cutrone.
Yeah.
I am closing the public comment, and I welcome your comments, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I just really am feeling a lot of good energy about this crew of folks, and it feels like one of those Marvel movies where all the superheroes converge at one point in time to do something really amazing. So I just wanted to note that that energy is, I'm feeling that palpably here, and I'm sure my colleagues are. I just want to, again, welcome everyone and so grateful.
Councilmember Goddard.
I will be incredibly brief. Welcome, welcome. I'm so pleased to have new staff, more support, a more robust, energetic office, which I know is coming. But I also wanted to say that, Sean, you have the wrong profile picture up there. So we're going to have to have you use the Fairfax logo when you go to the panel. And anyway, welcome, and we'll take care of that logo in short order. Welcome you all.
Yeah, I echo everyone's comments. I'm so excited to have the skill level on staff and heartfelt welcome. So with that, we are now transitioning to open time for public expression. So this is the time where we welcome your comments on items that are not on the agenda. It is not the time to speak on 2282. It is not the time to speak on rent control or rent stabilization. This is the time to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I see four raised hands, and speakers are limited to three minutes per comment. And we'll start with Michael Ardito. You're unmuted now.
Good evening. This is Mike Ardito. I'm a member of the Fairfax Open Space Committee. I'm calling on behalf of the committee to raise awareness of our fundraising challenge for the Fairfax Library Garden and Patio Project. At our January meeting, we voted to use $250 of our fundraising money that we've done over the years to purchase a 12-inch by 12-inch paver for the new garden that would say Town of Fairfax Open Space Committee since 2004. A part of that motion was to raise awareness for this worthy project and to have a community challenge to match our $250. We received a $50 check last week from a former Open Space Committee member, and so we're only $200 short of the $500 paver. So we're hoping that between now and our next Open Space meeting on March 22nd, that we can encourage community members to help raise the additional $200 so we can work with the town and do the electronic paperwork to purchase the paver before the April deadline. So thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Michael.
The next speaker is Jody Timms. You're unmuted now.
Good evening again, councilmembers, mayor, and vice mayor. On behalf of Age Friendly Fairfax, I just want to mention a thing or two. On behalf of Age Friendly Fairfax, I just want to mention a thing or two. I ran across a statistic today that saddened me. About half of the Marin residents who are over 75 do not have daily in-person contact with people. Forty-one percent of those people live alone and 27% of them eat every meal alone. So I just want to say that if you live in Fairfax and you're over 75 and these things are true for you, I really invite you to learn more about Ross Valley Seniors, Age Friendly Fairfax. There are a lot of activities, there are yoga classes, there are things to get involved with, and we would love you to not be so isolated. The Age Friendly Fairfax Task Force is also working with the library to create a series of educational events. Climate change was actually one of the highest areas of concern for older adults when the Commission on Aging did a survey recently. So we're going to be doing a series of Saturday morning events at the library, so check the library website for that. And as a member of the Climate Action Committee, I just want to mention, I think probably many of us saw the IPCC report this week. Those always take our breath away of the situation that we're in the midst of. There's many ways to start to address the climate crisis if you're not already involved and I imagine many people in Fairfax in one way or another are working on their ability to address this. But the Climate Action Committee is an active committee in town. We're looking for members and our meetings are open. We invite you to interact with us and learn more about what we're doing and help us out. The two biggest sources of emissions or pollution that come from our town and most towns are automobiles and the burning of gasoline and in our homes from the burning of natural gas. So we have initiatives to address both of those issues. These are not going to be easy changes that we need to make, not just in our town, but really across the planet as we know, as we learn more about the situation in Russia and Ukraine and Europe. So I just want to mention that we're trying to address those and we're interested in being in dialogue and helping to support those changes that we all need to make. They're not going to be easy, they're not going to be inexpensive, but to electrify our modes of transportation and our buildings and our homes and our businesses is a big challenge. And we're here and wanting to work and we just want to invite people to engage with us if you would like. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Jody.
The next speaker is Josephine Bueneagel and you're unmuted now.
Hi, good evening. This is Joseph Bueneagel and I'm the Fairfax representative on the Marine Commission on Aging. And just wanted to mention briefly tomorrow's Marine Commission on Aging meeting. It starts at 10:00 with a presentation, as it typically does. The presentation will go for about an hour with some time for Q and A. There are two topics tomorrow. One is around, sorry, I have to expand my notes. Here we go. Focusing on hearing loss, understanding how pervasive hearing loss is, misconceptions about people with hearing loss. And this kind of information will really help all of us to have better understanding and create a more age-friendly community for those with hearing loss. And then the second topic in the meeting tomorrow is about dementia and Alzheimer's and vascular dementia and they'll be offering some information about the causes and changes in the brain. So an opportunity to learn, an opportunity if you have questions. And then all are welcome to stay afterwards for the business meeting that starts just after 11:00. The link, the attendance is through Zoom and I've put, I've put the information in a public next door meeting post, so it can be found there as well as, I believe, the Age Friendly Fairfax flyer. That is my update today. Thank you.
Thank you, Josephine.
The next speaker is Gwen White. You're unmuted now. Go ahead, Gwen.
Hi. I've been meaning to reach out to all of you guys and I think I did send an email to the mayor. I didn't hear back from him. This is about smart meters in Fairfax and I'm a bit confused as to why Fairfax and Sebastopol are the two towns in, I guess, this area that have a, it's not a moratorium, but it can be overturned by the town council. So when I called PG&E to get a smart meter because I have an electric vehicle, they told me they couldn't. So I'm reaching out to you and asking why this is still in place here in the town of Fairfax. I feel like it's a disservice to the community, first of all. Second of all, we have two charging ports in the parcade, I think. Not enough for this whole community to go down there and plug their car in if they want to charge it. We are a sustainable community and I feel like this is backwards. PG&E is our one source to get energy and it's very limited. I feel like rates are lower for residents at a later time in the evening if you have a smart meter. If you don't have a smart meter, it's, they're not. So all these surveys you get from PG&E saying, "Check your survey, check your energy survey, check your energy use." We can't do that because we can't, they can't track our energy use unless you have a smart meter. So I would encourage the town council to look into this. I think it's going to be an upcoming thing where many residents will want to get that discount if they buy an electric vehicle. They go off your VIN number and you get a discount for charging your car at home. I can't get that. Either can the numerous other people in this town that have an electric vehicle. This is what we're going towards. This is the future and Fairfax is stuck with Sebastopol. And I encourage you to please take a look at this. I think the risks outweigh the benefits. Or the benefits outweigh the, oh, sorry, outweigh the risks. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Pamela Mags, followed by Kirsten Asher. And Pamela, you're unmuted now.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I wanted to have, well, it's a couple of announcements I have. I'm on the board of the Ross Valley Sanitary District and I don't know if you've noticed, but we have a survey running right now and it's up on the 10th of March. And it all has to do with the Larkspur Landing property. It's almost 10 acres. We've had it finally approved by the EPA. We are going to start the process of thinking about what to do with the property. So I would really love it if you could take that survey. It's three to five minutes. It's at the rvsd.org website and it's a nice survey. I think it's very simple. My second announcement is I'm on the Firewise Cascade Canyon Firewise Group. And I recently found out that the MWPA, which is the Marin Wildfire Preparation Association, or did I get that wrong? Anyway, there is a public meeting on 3:10 from 6:00 to 8:00 PM and that is for the Ross Valley Shaded Fuel Brake information. So I just sort of found this out at the last minute and I didn't see it anywhere else. So I hope you can attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela.
The next speaker is Kirsten Asher and you're unmuted now.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Welcome to our new town manager and hello, town council. When I spoke last month, I respectfully requested that you consider signing the brand Hwang Mendoza Land Use Initiative Resolution by placing this item on the agenda to discuss. I and others emailed you all by the deadline. It is not on the agenda, so I'm back. What motivates me is my concern for developing up our town, one that clearly has water traffic and fire escape route egress issues. The TC has granted the honor and privilege of protecting the lives and property of their constituents and our outdoor open space land through ordinances. So I looked for your names and for the town of Fairfax to see if there was a record of your endorsement of the resolution, one which over 250 California towns endorsed. It overall states that we reject the idea of a state coming into our town to strip us of zoning and building rights, yet I didn't see any of your endorsements. Other town council members, mayors and assembly members from all over the state have endorsed this, including the mayor of Larkspur. That made me curious, why not Fairfax? You all know what it's like during an emergency on Drake, traffic stalls for hours. Why wouldn't you be adopting a resolution that has no legal ramifications, by the way, that says, "Hey, state, your laws feel like an overreach and unconstitutional." I understand urgency ordinances are being put in place now to comply with the state housing laws and that signing the resolution doesn't prevent development. It's too late for that until a constitutional amendment nullifies these laws. But why promote building? I went to our town website and saw that you had an excited building pitch. The quote was, "Be part of the solution." It literally reads, "As a developer's dream." Your site proceeds to make it easy for people to place a query about developing additional homes on their residential lots with SB9. SB9 is a voluntary housing bill, so this makes you all look like pro-growth. Curious if you are. The state doesn't require we place houses on our residential lots. So why are you encouraging this building? They are not low-income homes. Folks really need to think, to know that SB9 is not low-income housing. 800 square foot homes go for nearly 3K a month. We are not, we are allowed now to put four buildings on a 2,400 square foot property. All that building adds cars, pollution, water usage. Does a TC know there are development companies advertising now to give citizens upfront money for their residential SB9 bills for a percentage of profits? SB9 is not open to just wealthy landowners, it's for people with decent credit. On next month's agenda, let's discuss the town's position on development, let's educate the public on SB9 and how it's not low-income.
Thank you, Kirsten.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Barbara McFay, followed by Deborah Benson. And Barbara, you're unmuted now.
Lovely, thank you so much. Lovely to see you. I wanted to do a follow-up on the COVID, you know, culture that we have been in for the last two years as we're coming out of the fear mode and the reactions that so many of us take and for good or for bad, everyone wants to judge it. There is a rising conversation, that has been a conversation, but one has not been wanting to talk about it and I think it's time to talk about it. Statistics are out. Seventy-eight percent of the people who died or were hospitalized had major dietary diseases. Obesity, number one. Diabetes, hypertension, the list goes on. The WHO has called this a wake-up call to Western diets, that we need to start paying attention to our health. Specifically, when you see the statistics in the US, one out of three adults are obese. What's more chilling, I would call it, is one out of five children are obese. And I see this in the schools. I see four-year-olds who are unable to do crisscross applesauce on the rug during morning circle. This is a real crisis in this county and I'm sure it is in this city as well. Seventy-four percent of youth are not qualified to serve in the military because of dietary obesity issues. This is a concern. The 2001 US Surgeon General called it out in a report. Obesity is becoming an epidemic and it's a pandemic in the making. That was 20 years ago. He called it out. Again, seventy-eight percent of the people who died or were hospitalized had major dietary diseases. This is a conversation that we really need to start sharing in leadership, in starting with city council, but beyond that. And people do not want to talk about it and I don't know why, because I care about people as you do too. And if there is a concern of health, we need to bring this to the forefront or we will be in pandemics continuously. I read the patch today. Research has shown that poor COVID outcomes, including hospitalizations and deaths, are linked to lifestyle diseases, including obesity, diabetes, smoking. Prolonged exposure to modified lifestyle behaviors, including smoking, unhealthy diet, physical inactivity, weakens the body's immune response to infection. What was the following paragraph? I will read. "The takeaway message: To stay vigilant on booster shots and stay focused on communities' recovery from the pandemic." Why are we not talking about dietary diseases? Because these dietary diseases are affecting all of us. When you account for 78% of the people, CDC statistics, were hospitalized or died. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara.
Next speaker is Deborah Benson, followed by Kathy Flores. Deborah, you're unmuted.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, council members, for hearing me. I would like to speak on something that I believe is not on the agenda, but clarification on that. I heard a very quick statement about number 20 regarding design standards for park lists that business owners were interested in.
We continued that.
But may I finish my sentence?
Oh, sure.
Oh, thank you. So that was a two-parter. One was the design standards, the other one was a continuation of the temporary permits, where they both continued.
Yes. It was one agenda item and they're both continued.
Well, I wasn't clear on that. So thank you very much. That's all.
The next speaker is Kathy Flores, followed by Richard Applebaum. And Kathy, you're unmuted now.
You in here? Okay, hi. Thanks, Michelle. Good evening, town council and welcome to our new town manager. This may sound like a broken record, but here I go. It's in regards to Senate Bill 910. How many residents, excuse me, do you think know about or understand the impacts of this bill and what it will have do in Fairfax? Senate Bill 910 is a cookie cutter Senate bill whose A-BAG formulary does not fit every town. One thing SB9 and 10 does is allow up to four homes to be built on a lot that once had a single home. These four homes can then be sold separately, plus you can also add on an ADU if you'd like. Who has their hands in the till? Profitable developers, realtors, politicians? Do you think they really care about workforce housing? Not at all. They buy homes for cash, then divide and sell at market rate, not at affordable housing rates. Workforce housing is important, but that's different than developers who don't live in our community and are being given free rein over towns, destroying communities with no regard to fire, water, parking, traffic, emergency evacuations, proximity to existing single-family residential properties. In today's news, water officials warn low Sierra snowpack is one level short of a catastrophe. California's mountain snowpack is shrinking and climate change is intensifying with severe drought. We aren't in a time of crisis. We have a climate crisis. We have a wildfire crisis and we have droughts intensifying over time. Many of us live all these fears 12 months a year. While developers are promoting underground water storage during heavy rains by creating percolation basins, our problem is the amount of water, not the storage. If we don't get rain, we don't have water and we can't rely on other water districts who are in a water crisis to help Marin. Has the attorney, has our attorney, town attorney and the town council adopted or even thought of submitting a resolution like other towns, who have written an ordinance that protects their towns from these money-hungry people from taking over? Our town attorney, who seems to be pro-housing, and the town council say their hands are tied. There's not much we can do. Is it time to get another attorney's opinion? Where do you stand in submitting a resolution? If one hasn't been submitted, I'd like to know why. I am counting on our staff and elected town council to stand up and prevent the state from taking over our town, wake up like other small towns in California and submit a resolution to stop this craziness and put our town of Fairfax back in the hands of the locals. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Michelle.
The next speaker is Richard Applebaum. You're unmuted.
Good evening, council. Uh, I'd like to believe the town council sees as part of its mandate that it is supposed to be responsive to and representing its constituencies. It is well known now that the state laws that are gutting our local control and compelling massive development are not popular. What I'm not understanding is why we have not heard from any of the town council on the topic in general. Many, many of us have seen the, the Spotswood article in the recent IJ that suggests that the anger, frustration and acrimony from townsfolk toward their town council is somewhat misdirected. No one in Fairfax thinks our council can rewrite the laws. What we are struggling with is none of you telling us your positions. A recent town newsletter was promoting the SB nine Scott Wiener special and lauding 10 owners who have signed on. There are financiers waiting in the wings to help fund this anti-community initiative to just create profit. Why is that being published in the newsletter? I'd like to see a newsletter and section on the town website that has five commentaries from all five council members saying exactly what you believe and feel about the changes in laws and pressure on us to develop on a scale never before seen here in this town. How can we trust you are one of us and with us and our neighbors in demonstrating your representation of us all? If you did not express your opinion and perhaps concerns about the cookie cutter approach of these state laws that undermine local control, dismiss the decades of hard work by prior councils to allow us to have the Fairfax we have today and acknowledge that the very nature of the town itself may be in jeopardy and ignore all the safety resource stream for additional infrastructure and quality of life issues, which are many. In short, there's no sense that any of our town council has any moxie of resistance. Other towns are exploring legal and at least signing on to resolutions, saying this is not desired and we do not agree with the state forcing us. Even someone who believes that some affordable housing will allow more diversity and inclusion for Fairfax, it's hard to imagine anyone familiar with our town and who lives or works here, wherever they fall in the political spectrum could think that 490 to possibly 700 new units of housing is reasonable. It's not, when all we hear is discussion of the process with consultants and there's never been a forum or an agenda item to have a frank discussion of the entire situation so that the public can express themselves and the council let us know their views. It's puzzling and doesn't help breed confidence. The only way to accommodate the changes coming is to rezone the town. So there goes 50 years of work and it will just be a free for all thereafter. There's no going back. Big money and special interests and developers win and our town will be unrecognizable by the time we get to the next eight year update to the housing element. This is not an easy time for towns like ours in the state and we are all very aware of impending climate disaster in the political landscape of 2022, the divides in America and the world. And we don't expect you to solve all the woes, but many of us feel unresponded to in an honest and frank way by the council, particularly on the development and land use rezoning matters. And many of us are disappointed that despite the limitations, we don't get a sense of any interest in creating a culture of resistance to things that are unfair and unreasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
The next speaker is Michelle Simonson. You're unmuted.
Go ahead, Michelle.
You might have to unmute yourself. Uh, there you go.
Michelle, are you there? Why don't we move to Mallory and see if we can get Michelle back on?
Okay. Uh, Mallory, you're unmuted now.
Hi. Um, I just want, I just want you guys to know I completely agree with, um, what Richard and Kathy said. And I don't have, I don't have to add anymore except that we used to be a town that did stand up for itself and fight against things we did not believe in. The older town council groups, and I want us to get back there because we are not quite the same as, uh, the other people in other towns in Marin, um, on this side, not the west side. And so I, I, I want us to stand up and fight for what we want and what we believe in and to try to keep Fairfax, Fairfax instead of it turning into Mill Valley again. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mallory.
The next speaker is Mark Bell. And you're unmuted now.
Hi, Michelle. Ling Shen's gonna talk and then I'm gonna talk if that's okay.
Okay, so, uh, this is Ling Shen and I just wanted to say that I, uh, agree a hundred percent with what Kathy Flores was just said and also what Mallory said. I totally agree, so I don't need to repeat what they said because they spoke much better than I would. So just put my voice on their side, on their statement. Thank you so much.
Okay, Michelle, you want to give me three minutes or you want me to go back and queue? Either way is fine.
You're already on your three minutes. Yes.
Okay. Uh, so as, uh, the council continues to read this land acknowledgement statement, which obviously I find offensive and many people previously found offensive and they just, I guess, gave up even listening to the meetings because they're finding no responsiveness from, uh, this council. Uh, as I've said before, there were Neanderthals on, in North America. And there's a good chance that they lived in this area. And if you want to have a land acknowledgement about unceded land, then you should talk about the Mewox living on unceded land themselves. Uh, I've already brought up the points about how it was Mexico and Spain who were the main contributors to the destruction of the Mewox, let alone the other native tribes in California. Also, you seem to find my comments offensive, but I find it interesting that, you know, you don't seem to find offensive when, uh, someone character on the council characterizes everyone in Fairfax, if not Marin, as being a bunch of white, rich people uh, who really don't care or they only care about their $200 athletic shoes. Or maybe, you know, you hire an unqualified delusional person at over three and a half times the going rate of someone who actually would be qualified uh, to run meetings that accomplish nothing in months, runs over their budget and then you give them another 15,000. So we're now at $65,000 of money wasted, not even going to someone who needs it. And we're told, oh, just forget about it. The money is gone. We can look at the Cascade Striping Project, the entire project was illegal. We're first told that, oh no, this hasn't costing the town of Fairfax anything. But how much was spent? Another 65,000? You don't seem to find that offensive. Uh, go back to the whole thing with 5G. Instead of taking, uh, the advice of a former, uh, council member and adopting Mill Valley's resolution to go with the one we already had, we end up with an additional $150,000 legal bill. I don't know. You don't seem to find that offensive either. So when people say, wow, you really are rude, meaning me. Well, I think there's plenty of justification. That's all I have for you this evening at this point.
Okay, we're coming up on the 30 minutes for public comment for open time. Um, I'm gonna see Michelle and so we're gonna cut off comments after. I see Michelle and Callie and, and, and no others thereafter until at the end of the meeting. We can pick it back up. Um, Michelle, are you still there wanting to talk?
Uh, this is Michelle Simonson, not me, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Michelle Simonson, you're unmuted now. But we can't hear you. You might want to check your mic connection. If you're using a headset, maybe the, you know, with the wire or something, it's not stuck in there, right?
Okay, Michelle, why don't you go ahead and send it?
I hear.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. There you go.
Technology's not my strong suit. Um, so, um, I just wanted to first of all, say that I am really, really happy to welcome our new town manager. Yay. And I want to enthusiastically and emphatically echo everything that Kirsten, Kathy and Richard said. I am so hopeful that you will put this issue on the agenda next time. Um, and they actually covered everything I wanted to say, but Kirsten said that she had some things she hadn't finished, so I'm going to just say that, if that's okay. Um, ready? Um, on next month's agenda, let's discuss the town's position on development. Let's educate the public SB nine is not low income housing and SB 10 has a smattering of low income housing that eventually will go to market rate. Let's do a traffic study graph about the projected impact of all these builds on their likely fruition. Where's the Fairfax I moved to in the nineties when we pushed Chevron out of our town? And by the way, this is Michelle speaking about that. I loved that. I fell in love with Fairfax when I went to that meeting. Anyway, um, where's, and back to Kirsten, where's that outside lawyer's second option on how to fight the state back on this overreach? We need to discuss the town council's development stance under the public eye. Thank you. Um, so that's what Kirsten said and I'll just keep going that I am really grateful for everything that the council is doing, but I think that we can stand up. I mean, I've looked at what some of these other towns have done. I've looked at some of these resolutions and I think that it's possible for us to be able to take a stand on this. And I, we should at least have it on the agenda so that people, that all of the citizens can have some feedback on it. So, um, or their input rather. So thank you very much and that's it.
Thank you, Michelle.
And the last speaker is Callie Ballard. You're unmuted now.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Um, so I just came in and, uh, I hear that this, part of this meeting is about, uh, rent control and strengthening eviction protections. And just to, um, slightly correct, uh, I forget who it was, but it was a man who said there were Neanderthals here. And Neanderthals actually came from Europe. I'm a history teacher, uh, so I like to correct. But anyway, I am a history teacher with, uh, two master's degrees. I love my job, but the fact is with housing prices around here, I will never be able, uh, neither me nor my partner, regardless of how much money we make, uh, we will never be able to afford a house, uh, in Fairfax or San Anselmo or really anywhere in Marin. And so I think that passing a rent control ordinance would keep people like me in the community.
We're not, we're not on that topic right now. This is for items not on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Well, anyway, that's my piece.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna close public comment. And we are now moving on to the presentation on rent stabilization. Uh, and let me just.
It's actually not the next agenda item.
We have the proclamations next, ma'am.
Oh, my, uh, my apologies. Thank you. Number three on the agenda, proclamation in honor of Adam Pulitzer. Adam, um, I, uh, have so much to share about, um, the value and the contributions you've made. Um, I think in, in speaking with Renee and, um, preparing this proclamation, I said, you know, nobody would have judged you if you just helped keep the lights on. And, um, you did so much more than that. Um, I know that we're all grateful and I'm sure everyone will share their comments, but I really felt, um, the performance of the staff, um, be elevated and everyone I feel is working more as a team. I feel like the, um, the council has gelled more and I think it's a direct, uh, result of your coaching and your feedback and your wisdom as, as a leader. And, um, I just can't thank you enough for everything you've done to really invest in our, in our town. And, um, I am going to read this proclamation and then I will open it up to public comment. And I'm pretty certain my colleagues will have comments as well. So the town of Fairfax proclamation, Adam Pulitzer interim town manager. Whereas Adam Pulitzer was deeply respected as city manager of the city of Sausalito, where he served for 13 years, the longest in Sausalito history. And whereas less than a year post-retirement, Adam agreed to take the helm as Fairfax interim town manager and poured considerable energy into creating a seamless transition between previous and incoming town managers. And whereas Adam worked tirelessly to make sure the town manager, climate action coordinator, interim public works director and administrative analyst positions were filled. And whereas Adam's daughter Hannah Pulitzer previously served as Fairfax deputy town clerk and thus Adam was referred to by staff as Hannah's dad, much to the amusement of the Pulitzer family. And whereas Hannah is caring for the family legacy of public service as deputy city clerk and management analyst, analyst two for the city of Mill Valley. And whereas Adam coached Kentfield girls softball for 16 years, including all three of his daughters. And whereas in the spirit of coaching, Adam generously shared his time, his team spirit, wisdom and experience with staff and council, demonstrating a genuine commitment to developing and enhancing the performance of the team as a whole and for the betterment of the community. And whereas Adam prioritized the team and consistently worked to get to yes. And whereas Adam introduced new operational and procedural practices, including publishing the agenda forecast and regular agenda planning meetings with the mayor, vice mayor and the clerk. And whereas Adam emphasized key leadership competencies such as the value of communication, recognizing contribution of others and many more. And whereas Adam enjoyed frequently and frequenting and supporting Fairfax dining establishments and sharing meals with different members of staff during his lunchtime. And whereas not only did Adam kick off summer music on the ball field, but he brought his friends and family to this picnic and celebrate, and celebrated with our community. And whereas Adam's accomplishments during his short tenure are no less than extraordinary. And whereas his dedication to the town is deeply appreciated by staff and council. Now it therefore be hereby proclaim that the town council extends its heartfelt gratitude to Adam Pulitzer for his steady hand and open heart and wishes him well in his future endeavors. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up to, uh, public comment and then we can circle back. I'm seeing no hands, so I'm gonna close the public comment. Oh, wait, maybe I do. Sorry. Okay, I see Jody. Go ahead.
Um, Adam, I just wanted to say what an absolute pleasure it was to work with you. Thank you so much for what you did and, and how much energy and support and love you've given our town. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. It's a pleasure working with you.
Uh, Deborah Benson is the next speaker. You're unmuted.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, council members. And thank you, Adam, for bringing such a, uh, a state of professionalism and open ear to our community. Thank you very much. A breath of fresh air. And, um, good, good, uh, wishes for you and in your next steps.
Thank you, Deborah.
Okay, I'm seeing no more hands. I'm gonna close the public comment. And I believe I saw, uh, Heather, you had your hand up?
I just wanted to echo that and say thank you to Adam for making this transition so smooth. And, um, he's been tireless, uh, as an interim and, uh, really appreciate that work.
Thank you. Chief Tabaranza?
Hello, uh, same thing, Adam. I just wanted to thank you and congratulate you again on another milestone, you know, retiring again. Uh, just want to thank you for your willingness, willingness to come out of retirement to help the town of Fairfax at, at, in the midst of the hardest of times that we had. Uh, also, I just want to let you know that you provided a lot of structure, stability and direction to all of us and the Fairfax staff. And we, uh, really appreciate it and we learned a lot from working with you in that short time. So thank you for everything and we look forward to bothering you in your retirement. And maybe we can, uh, hire you back again for something. I don't know. Maybe a cadet position, but thank you.
Okay, council member Kohler.
Well, I just want to thank you, Adam. Most interims just keep the papers moving and clearly you did much more than that. I had an opportunity to work very closely with Hannah and was glad to work with her dad, who really has shown a lot of leadership and really a stabilizing force during these transitions. Garrett was a wonderful town manager for eight and a half years and brought so much to the town. In the six months you've come, you helped us, really helped us get a new town manager on board, have some stabilization for our staffing issues, get some additional help from Michelle Gardner, who's overwhelmed and overburdened, and I think really helped us move on to the next steps. Now I do have something for you that I'll just fold up. So this is something I gave to Hannah when she left.
Nice.
Fairfax T-shirt, and I believe the town council is giving you a small gift as well. But I just wanted you to have this and hopefully I guessed at the right size. I will say my cat just went in the bag and got hair all over it while we were waiting. But thank you so much. It's been a pleasure to get to know you and laugh with you and really talk about some really difficult issues. And you never kind of shied away from some of those really difficult, complicating issues that most people would have said, hey, I'm just interim. So thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Barbara.
Council member Ackerman.
Well, yes, thank you, Adam. I have just so appreciated working with you and learned so much. And I really wanted to thank you for your wisdom and your just steady hand and the enthusiasm that you've had for this town. I seldom even think about the fact that you're interim, except in the context of wishing you could stay longer. But you just jumped right in and, and have brought a lot of innovative ideas to how we work together that I think have been and will continue to be very helpful. So it's just, it's taught me a great deal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce.
Vice Mayor Cetrano.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Adam. It echoing my colleagues, all the things that they've said, and I also wanted to add that it's been a lot of fun, despite all of the, the challenges and, and the need to stabilize things and steady the ship and keep it going. It's, it really has been a great pleasure to work with you. And it's, it's also been a, a good learning lesson for me. And you know, this, this thing that we do, local government with the community, it really is a, a team sport. And it's, and, and any of the innovative stuff that you've brought to Fairfax, things like, like these shared service agreements with our fellow communities. It shows us that these, these team sports aren't competitions against other communities or anything like that. But it's, it's that we're, we're, you know, competing against a standard, a standard of excellence as a community. And all of the things that you've brought, your standard of excellence shines through. And, and we're all super grateful and, and thank you from, from the bottom of my heart for all that you've done to, to help me and guide me. So much appreciated and good luck and we'll see you soon.
Thank you, Chance.
Council member Goddard.
Um, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, Adam, I, I, I feel sort of shy for some reason. I, my colleagues have said so much, feel a little emotional, but generally feeling a little emotional these days in our world. You brought us such a perfect blend of the professional and the personal. Everything down to the emojis on the texts. It just made me feel sort of this baseline trust that you had our backs and that you were a foundation. And, and I really did push back sometimes because my impatience sometimes and I'd say, but, but, and, and you'd always say, just trust, just trust the process. And you really helped to center me and you guided us so wisely. And I just, I can't really express my appreciation enough, but all the best to you and enjoy all your free time. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you, everyone, for those comments. I agree with everyone. I just want to, in closing, I just want to share that I think, you know, the, the impacts or the legacy will live on through some of these, even the recent announcements of this evening with our staff and our staff additions. And, you know, I, I was a really crummy athlete as, as a kid and I participated in team sports, but not for very, not for very long. And I never had a coach that invested in me. And I, I, I felt like some of, when you first came on, your sports euphemisms were kind of hard for me to, you know, get with. But I really felt what I got, I think we all got a taste of what it would be like for, on a, on a team that you coached. And I just, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the, the coaching and feedback that I know you gave all of us. And I just wish you some relaxation in these coming weeks and thank you.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, if I can just say a few words. And it's overwhelming. I'm, I'm an emotional person as, you know, Renee and I both have that gene in us that it, it just triggers things, but it is a team. And, and I was also, I played baritone horn from the fourth grade through high school. So we could have used music in band and everyone had an instrument. And I'm the conductor, a little louder, a little faster, you know, I mean, there's all types of ways to look at the team. But you know, team stands for together, everyone achieves more. And that's what this team is doing. And that's why there's a lot of confidence in the direction we're heading and having someone like Heather and her skill set and experience taking, taking over the helm of the team. I just am so excited to see what Heather does as your full-time, you know, permanent town manager. So your experienced staff that you have on this team, and I can't thank Michelle enough for her support and guidance. There's no way that I could have been successful without Michelle Gardner's support and kindness. A lot of laughing and, and, and you have to laugh sometimes to get through it all. But you know, again, your longevity here with your public work staff, your maintenance guys, someone like Linda Neal, who knows everything, Mark Lockaby. I mean, you know, you're going to hear a little bit later about how well managed our finances are. Michael Fravette, I mean, I'm going to leave people out here, you know, Janet. You know, again, I can't thank Janet enough for, for her support. So it's the team. There's not one person and definitely not the town manager. Because like a conductor, I don't actually play an instrument. You know, like a coach, I'm not out in the field doing, you know, playing in the field and making the, making the plays. It's actually the staff and the council and your volunteers in your community that is doing all of the hard work. So I've been super humbled and blessed to be your leader for this past seven months. I learned so much from all of you, a significant amount from all of you. But most importantly, I feel that each of you, and I've been blessed in my, you know, my career as a town manager, that the councils I work for, I actually feel that you're my friends. I, I see our lives continuing here because we really did share the passion of working together. But it was a lot deeper than just coming to a job. It was really that connection that I had with each and every one of you. So thank you all. I will share this to close, that be careful when you're driving back from Disneyland and you get a call from a town manager asking you for a favor. Because here I was in Fantasyland, Anaheim, and now here I am at the end of seven months after taking that call, leaving Fantasyland in terms of all the great things that you're dreaming up and the creativity that comes out of the community of Fairfax. I wish you all well. I am thrilled that you have an outstanding team. And I'm most excited to see all the great things that Heather and you and as the community do in the years to come. So thank you all for allowing me to be a part of your team.
Okay. Uh, number four on the agenda is a proclamation in honor of Jonathan Goldman. And I am going to ask Barbara to read this. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor Hellman. I just want to say our Adam asked me if I wouldn't mind drafting a proclamation for Jonathan. And I was happy to do so. And I learned a little bit about him while I was doing it. So this is a bit longer, but I may just be too wordy. So Town of Fairfax proclamation for Jonathan Goldman, interim public works director. Whereas Jonathan Goldman has ably served as the interim public works director for the Town of Fairfax since August 2021, joining our Fairfax team on short notice and commuting long distances to do so. And whereas Jonathan has more than 40 years of professional engineering experience with 20 years in the private sector and for a second career serving as director of public works, first for five years in St. Helena and for 10 years in Sausalito, where he formally retired in January 2019. And whereas Jonathan had the bachelor of science degree in hydrology from the University of Arizona, has a master of science degree in civil engineering from MIT. He is a licensed professional engineer. And whereas Jonathan has three wonderful adult children, two sons, Julian and Cooper, and a daughter, Sloan. And whereas, even though Jonathan had moved to Tucson, Arizona, being a wonderful son in part to live near his mother, when interim town manager Adam Pulitzer asked him to serve as interim public works director, he jumped at the chance to help our town, maybe one of those Disneyland analogies, commuting 878 miles each way with two weeks onsite and one week working at home for a total of 16 trips, 14,000, 048 miles and more than 200 hours driving. And while in Marin, he couch-served at a friend's home. And whereas upon his arrival in Fairfax on day one, August 2nd, he was set up in a very spacious rustic and private office suite, lol with a smiley face, in the DPW corp yard with 10 years of trash, scary debris and many boxes of papers removed just prior to his arrival. And whereas the nature of this rustic space revealed itself early on with no phone service when it rains and no cell service anytime while in his office. And whereas during the October 23rd and 24th, 2021 storm and any significant storm thereafter, Jonathan moved into his mobile office. He converted his personal truck into his office. And whereas in his short seven-month tenure in Fairfax, Jonathan's accomplishments were many. And in his interim capacity, while he could not complete many longer-term projects, he did his best to establish a technically correct, appropriate path forward, including just a few highlights below of his work. And whereas when he arrived, Marin County was in a severe drought. Grassy turf in our parks and trees in Perry Park and the parkade were dead and dying due to lack of water. Jonathan quickly jumped into action, immediately ordering recycled water, water storage tanks and a pump so that watering and street sweeping could ensue while conserving potable water. And whereas Jonathan began working with the town's bridge consultant to continue design work on the six bridges and start preliminary right-of-way work for Meadowway Bridge. And whereas he began work on need, on evaluating needed changes to the recently installed Perry Park children's play equipment and area for rendering the skate park permanent. He's also evaluated and developed an approach for ensuring safe and compliant parklots and other outdoor eating areas in the town should they continue beyond COVID. And whereas Jonathan quickly took on repairs of three problematic storm drain segments on Broadway in the vicinity of Dock Edgar Park and on Sir Francis Drake between San Miguel Court and Oak Manor. He was able to conduct temporary yet stabilizing repairs to all yet supply chain issues prevented permanent repairs at this time. And whereas pavement and surface drainage repairs were completed on Bay Road in a 300-foot section of Oak Road under his direction. And whereas Jonathan willingly took on the seismic retrofit of the pavilion, he developed and recommended a short-term plan intended to deliver the foundation, structural improvements and certain ADA accessibility changes as the first phases. Under his leadership, the council approved bids for foundation and archaeology support with contractors in the Great Rancheria. And whereas he recently submitted documentation and other necessary paperwork for two projects completed some time ago to Caltrans and other funders, which should result in reimbursements of about $400,000 to the town and maybe more. Whereas on December 13th, 2021, the town learned of a large hazardous sinkhole and a failed retaining wall at, on Sir Francis Drake. Jonathan, DPW and the Fairfax Police jumped into action. He immediately, Jonathan immediately contacted contractors and had the council declare a local emergency, which was renewed a couple of times. He oversaw the work, coordinating with contractors, police and others as needed. Less than three weeks later, and I may be wrong there, the extensive work was completed. This was a significant accomplishment under his leadership. And in recent days, he's been working hard to ensure significant funding will be reimbursed to the town by the state and other agencies. And whereas despite his short tenure, Jonathan has demonstrated his commitment and support to the Town of Fairfax's DPW and its projects. He never said no to taking on complex and many other public works projects for our town. And whereas Jonathan quickly earned the respect and gratitude of the town council and the Fairfax community. And now therefore be it hereby proclaimed that in acknowledgement of its many contributions during his short tenure in Fairfax, the Town of Fairfax wishes Jonathan Goldman success in his future endeavors. And be it further claimed that the Department of Public Works is in a much better position to move forward under the leadership of our new town manager, Heather Abrams, due to Jonathan's thoughtful and progressive DPW actions, his dedication and his hard work. Ergo, the town council of the Town of Fairfax is grateful and indebted to Mr. Jonathan Goldman PE and sincerely thanks him for his service to our lovely town. Thank you, Jonathan.
Sorry about the long-windedness.
You're welcome. Thank you. I, at some point, if I have a moment.
Maybe now.
I would, I would love to, to thank you all more broadly. It's a, a little bit emotional for me too. But at the same time, I'm, I'm grateful for the thanks and grateful for the friendships and the, and the opportunity to become a part of Fairfax's team. And I, you know, I, I give Adam Pulitzer a great deal of credit for that. And I know that I've shared this story with, with many of you, maybe all of you, that, that I first met him when he was my daughter's one and only softball coach, which has got to be, you know, 15 or 20 years ago at this point. And, uh, you know, I too share a lot of excitement about the opportunities that exist for the Town of Fairfax, not just elected, but certainly the staff. And I think that the, the new staff, as well as the institutional knowledge that the, the staff that are there now represent has a lot of upside. And there are serious challenges ahead, you know, and I think you're all well aware of them and up for those challenges. And I, I think that it speaks well of any community that, that those kinds of, those kinds of challenges get taken head-on. And that, you know, new revenues are generated and, you know, retiring staff are replaced with, with incoming staff and the opportunity to do shared service. you know, retiring staff are replaced with, with incoming staff and the opportunity to do shared services arrangements and, and leverage the, the capabilities that, you know, that I think you all are, are doing is wonderful. So I appreciate the opportunity and want to thank you all for, for allowing me to serve the community for as long as I could.
I'm going to open public comment and then we'll take it back for our final comments.
The first speaker is Deborah Benson. You're unmuted.
Hello, Deborah Benson, Fairfax. Jonathan, I want to thank you for taking the helm and for your expertise and as a member of Fairfax, as one of Fairfax's committees for your responsiveness and, and your guidance. And you just, you did a great job and we were so happy to have you. I can't thank you enough. So good luck in, in your, hopefully your retirement. I am jealous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Next speaker is Jody Timms.
Jody Timms Cascade Drive. Jonathan, it's just a pleasure to thank you. Early on, we shared a long cup of coffee at the Coffee Roastery and I don't think I've ever felt so listened to by a staff member before. It was just a delightful moment to share our concerns about climate issues and electric cars and, and everything. And you so amazingly just took the ball and ran with it. I mean, not just one ball. It was like your whole arms were full of basketballs. Every time I turned around, I heard something else that you were involved with and you've just laid such a groundwork for some of the climate action work that is going to, is going to happen in this town. And, you know, I love the Disneyland metaphor because I just want to say you really did make magic happen here. So thank you so, so much. I'll miss you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Larry Bragman. You're unmuted. Larry, you might have to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I just want to say good evening to everybody. And when I saw the item for Jonathan, I just had a weigh-in because I met him with, in regard to a problem we had up on Ridge Road with the Water District. I had a chance to walk up there with one of my dogs, met Jonathan, who was so patient and great listener for everybody because there were a lot of different agencies involved in this particular pretty small problem. And honestly, that was kind of the last I heard of it until I walked my dog up there a few months later and it was fixed. So, you know, and I, as I walk around the town, I see a lot of other little nooks and crannies that Jonathan took care of that were really sort of chronic eyesores. So it, it was just great to see somebody come in and really take matters by the horn and, and with such professionalism and, and grace. So I just want to thank you for everything that you, you gave to the town. And good luck with your next venture too.
Thanks.
Larry.
Thanks a lot.
I don't see any more speakers. Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Heather, I see your hand.
I just wanted to say thank you to Jonathan and really acknowledge the foundational work of, of Public Works and how important that is. I've been to a lot of public meetings where Public Works Directors are retiring and I have never seen the outpouring of support like this. So I hope you, you take that in, Jonathan. You deserve that.
Thank you.
Chief Tabaranza.
Thank you. Jonathan, just want to say thank you. Congratulations on getting your time back. You know, all those commute hours and answering late calls from me. I just wanted to let everyone know how impressed I was with, with Jonathan. When there was, the creek was about to flood and we had the storm. He was right in there with Adam, ready to pull branches out of the, the creek behind the police department. And then I knew at that moment that this guy Jonathan was no joke. He was ready to get dirty with us. So thank you for all what you did in this short time. You made a big impact and you certainly helped me a lot. So hey, congratulations. Get your time back and maybe Fantasyland will open up for you, but thank you so much.
Thanks, Chief.
Vice Mayor, John O.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Jonathan, I, I think a lot of us on the council knew the value that bringing a, a Public Works Director onboard would, would bring to the Town of Fairfax. And little did we know, when we, when we signed that contract, you would get like four people for the price of one. I still am kind of unsure how you were able to, to do all the things you did at the same time. And I think everybody's tracking with that from the comments that I've heard so far. But, you know, everything from the recycled water to planting new trees in the middle of that drought and the walkabouts we did with the Transportation Authority to talk about circulation and parking issues and safe routes to school meetings and all of the emergencies and the backlog stuff you, you took on in the EV charging stuff. It's just really phenomenal what you've accomplished and, and the path you've set us on for the years and years ahead. So thank you so much and I appreciate our friendship and I look forward to seeing you again around town when, when you make the commute back up soon. So thank you.
Councilmember Goddard.
Yes, Jonathan, thank you. I'm going to be brief, but I just, I feel like I need to add to Chance's list of the things that you actually did. I mean, all of a sudden there were curb cuts and ADA accessible sidewalks at Town Hall. And then there was garbage cans were actually moved onto the deck and some of the things that really set the stage for what it is that we can actually do moving forward. School route signs, almost everything that I ever saw you write down, all of a sudden toward the end, it was like popcorn and all these things were appearing. And so you have really, I think, excited us as to what is possible in a really great Public Works Director. So thank you for setting this stage. Thank you for all you've done and have a great, have a great time wherever you are.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yeah, well, I, I echo those comments and Jonathan, I really appreciated getting to know you a bit during this time and am incredibly impressed by your energy and your professionalism and the number of things you've been able to do, but just, you just seem to do it quietly. It just seems like you're not even hurried and somehow you're getting nine projects a day accomplished. It's, it's been very impressive working with you and I, I just invite you anytime you want to take a really long drive that we're here and we'd love to have another visit. Thank you.
Thank you.
All, all of that and, and more, Jonathan, I'm so impressed with how you dove in and I also found you to be such a good listener and you did it all with grace and good humor and I was particularly impressed with the CIP update and just, just so much. I, I'm just so grateful and I, I hope our paths crossed again and I, I hope you got some rest full-time off too because I know how hard you've worked.
Thank you very much.
Gratitude. Thank you. Okay. Well, with that, we're moving on to item five on the agenda, which is a presentation on rent stabilization. And we have a ten-minute presentation this evening who will be, that will be delivered by Kurt Reese, co-chair of the Marin Democratic Socialists of America and Leah Simon-Weisberg, the Legal Director of the Alliance for, of Californians for Community Empowerment Institute.
Madam Mayor, this is Michelle, the clerk. I believe Kurt has a presentation, so if I may promote him to panelist so he can share his screen.
Absolutely.
Okay, and I see you there, Kurt. Uh, let's see. Do, you're.
And, and I believe Leah is also in the attendees if.
Yeah.
Raise her hand too.
I haven't scrolled down that far yet. Hang on. Oh, she raised her hand. Now she's at the top. Okay, I'm gonna unmute Leah and assume that Kurt's sharing his screen, so he needs to be a panelist, but Leah, you can talk if you need to.
Great, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Well, hello, council members, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to present this evening on this important topic. My name is Kurt Reese. I'm the co-chair of the Marin, Marin Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America and one of the lead organizers for our campaign to establish rent control here in Marin County, starting in Fairfax. And presenting with me tonight is Leah Simon-Weisberg. Leah, do you want to briefly introduce yourself?
Sure. I have spent the last two decades working on housing affordability issues, including, you know, drafting several ordinances and working with different communities to address housing affordability as well as stabilization programs such as Just Cause and eviction.
Perfect. Thanks, Leah. So we're here to talk to you about our campaign to win rent control in Marin County and urge you to take the lead in Fairfax by passing a rent stabilization and just cause eviction ordinance. So we're going to go over the basic problem, which is the extremely high cost of housing in Fairfax and Marin in general and why that matters to working people. We'll then talk a bit about what, what rent control actually means and how it could work in Fairfax. We'll then cover our grassroots campaign and the very significant public support that has emerged in favor of passing rent control here. Leah is going to go over rent control's proven efficacy and its strong legal footing before wrapping up and answering your questions. And just a note on terminology, we're going to be using rent control and rent stabilization interchangeably. There's no technical or legal difference between those two terms. They mean the same thing. Okay, so the Marin has some of the most expensive rents in the entire country and Fairfax is no exception. According to the U.S. Census, Fairfax's median rent is over $1,800 per month. That's twenty percent higher than the statewide median rent and seventy-eight percent higher than the national median rent. According to the annual National Low Income Housing Coalition's Out of Reach Study, this is normally covered each year in the IJ, a Fairfax renter needs to earn sixty-seven, sixty-nine an hour to afford a modest two-bedroom apartment or fifty, fifty-five, seventy-seven an hour to afford a modest one-bedroom apartment without being rent burdened, that is, without spending more than thirty percent of their total income on rent. But here's the rub, the average real wage for Marin renters is just twenty-three, twenty-three an hour. So even if you have two income earners making the average wage, you're still not at what it takes to afford a one-bedroom apartment. It should come as no surprise then that forty-eight percent of Fairfax renters are rent burdened, meaning they spend again thirty, over thirty percent of their income on rent. What's more, twenty-eight percent of renters are severely rent burdened, meaning they pay over fifty percent of their total income on rent. Folks that are just barely scraping by. Looking at renter income, we can clearly see how wages are not keeping up with rents. So seventy-one percent of Fairfax renters are considered low income, very low income or extremely low income, with that last group alone constituting over a third of Fairfax renters. These are folks making less than thirty percent of the area median income. So when you look at this information as a whole, it's clear that this is a totally unsustainable situation for Fairfax renters, many of whom are just one rent hike away from being forced out of their homes and out of our community. Now, all this begs the question, who are Fairfax renters? So thirty-seven percent of Fairfax households rent their homes, well over a third of total residents. Overall, Fairfax renters are younger, more racially diverse and more working class than Fairfax homeowners. Eighty-seven percent of Fairfax households are under the, excuse me, eighty-seven percent of Fairfax households under the age of thirty-five are renters. Sixty-eight percent of Fairfax households who identify as Hispanic or Latino are renters. And sixty-six percent of Fairfax households who identify their race as something other than white are renters. So rent control therefore is not only a good idea in general because it gives people in their homes, it's also a social and racial justice issue. If we want to keep Fairfax's multiracial and age-diverse working class in town, we need rent control. So what would rent control actually do? Well, at the highest level, two things. Number one, place an annual cap based on inflation on how much landlords can raise rents. And number two, establish just cause eviction protections to prevent arbitrary evictions, keep students and teachers in their homes and protect renters who are evicted due to no fault of their own. So it's important to note here that there's no, that there's currently no rent control anywhere in Marin County, including Fairfax. There's an extremely weak state law that effectively allows for an up to ten percent rent hike each year and which relies entirely on tenants to know when you enforce the law. What we're proposing is a local rent control ordinance that would both place a cap, an annual cap on rents while strengthening the existing just cause eviction protections that are here in Fairfax. So how would it work? The basic, the basics are pretty simple and allowable, an annual allowable rent increase would be determined each year based on the Consumer Price Index or CPI, establishing a cap on how much landlords can raise the rent that year for eligible units. So landlords still can raise their, their rent each year, but there's a specific limit that's tied to inflation that determines that. A five-member-appointed rent board would then publicize the annual allowable rent increase to tenants and landlords in town, letting them know. And then upon learning the rental cap for that year, tenants and landlords would be able to file a petition to the rent board requesting that it be lowered or raised for their particular unit if they have some extenuating circumstances. And of course, if a landlord changes, charges a tenant more than what's permitted without an approved petition, the rent board would intervene to enforce the rental cap. So now let's talk briefly about what a rent control ordinance would look like in terms of administration. So as just described, you have the rent board, a council-appointed five-member commission that would be charged with administering and enforcing the rent control ordinance by setting and publishing the annual allowable rent adjustment and remedying instances where landlords overcharge a tenant. And, but, but the landlord, but landlord and tenant petitions don't actually go directly to the rent board. They would go to a hearing examiner, which is a board-appointed staffer shared with other jurisdictions who hear petitions to adjust the maximum allowable rent for a specific unit or building. And it's worth noting that based on the annual average petition rate per number of controlled units in cities like Berkeley and Mountain View, we estimate the annual petition caseload for Fairfax to be between two and ten petitions. That's a very manageable number. That's a very conservative estimate. The literal calculation would be two or three. And finally, additional administrative staffing needs would be assessed and determined by the rent board and paid for by a rental housing fee, which is a modest flat per unit fee paid annually by landlords. So we've calculated that a $10 monthly fee on fully-covered units and a $7 monthly fee on partially-covered rental units, meaning those covered by just cause eviction protections but ineligible for the rental cap due to state law would raise over $128,000 annually in Fairfax, a very substantial amount for the administration that would be required. So in terms of just cause eviction protections, our main goal is to strengthen the existing protections here in Fairfax. So we want to really fully commend the town for passing one of the few just cause ordinances on the books in Marin. However, as far as just cause provisions go, there are some pretty significant omissions that we would like to see added. So first would be the inclusion of relocation payments. These would provide transitional financial support for renters who are evicted due to no fault of their own. So for example, if a landlord evicts a tenant to have their family member move in, the tenant would be financially supported to land on their feet and find a new place to live. Second is to ensure tenants' right of return or right of first refusal, guaranteeing that tenants previously evicted due to no fault of their own are able to move back into their apartment if and when it becomes available. We also would like to see additional school year protections for educators and students against no-fault evictions as well as protections for seniors and those with disabilities against no-fault evictions. Finally, establishing a rent board and allocating administrative staff to enforcing the ordinance would ensure compliance. Through the course of this campaign, we've already learned of one 2021 owner move-in eviction covered by the existing just cause ordinance that was never reported to the town as required. In all likelihood, there are more out there. So those are the basics on how rent control would work in Fairfax. We just want to take a minute now to talk about the very significant public support that has emerged for this campaign. So we've got a great team. We've been out canvassing nearly every weekend since mid-November, talking with community members and collecting petition signatures to demonstrate the scale and scope of community support for rent control. So far, we've collected over thirteen hundred petition signatures in support of rent control countywide and more than four hundred and seventy signatures from Fairfax residents. That includes two hundred and ninety from Fairfax renters specifically. And beyond our field, fieldwork, we're extremely proud to have the support of numerous local unions and progressive organizations. Those that are officially supporting the campaign for rent control in Fairfax are on the screen here. The Sierra Club, the North Bay Labor Council, North Bay Jobs for Justice, the California Alliance for Retired Americans, the National Union of Healthcare Workers, United Here Local Twenty-eight Fifty, the United Food and Commercial Workers Local Five and Disability Justice Committee. So now I'm going to pass things over to Leah Simon-Weisberg to talk. So now I'm going to pass things over to Leah Simone Weisberg to talk about rent controls' efficacy and some other topics.
Right. Well, it's. You know, I think it's really important for us to remember that, you know, rent control has now been in California for more than fifty years. It is, you know. It also, I think it's really important for us to remember how the amount of economic stability that it has shown, and we, we actually learned that during the foreclosure crisis and that the cities that had rent control actually recovered more quickly. And had a lot less displacement. Rent control, for example, and just cause combined protected swaths of Berkeley and Los Angeles and even San Francisco. And I think more importantly, the recovery was much faster because they didn't have the, the level of displacement. Tenants in general are less rent burdened because their rents cannot be increased at the same levels. And I think that, you know, one of the other things that we have seen is that the discretionary income that tenants, instead of having it go to rent, goes into the local economy. And when, and I think we, you know, we hear over and over about when you want to stimulate the economy, you want people who are going to spend it, not people who are going to invest it. And in, you know, in their savings account and the stock market. And, you know, tenants are exactly that, that vehicle. And so you see again and again, when you ask people if, if they didn't spend it on their rent, what they would, would they have spent it on? And it's savings and then, you know, it's it's savings that they can use in their local economy and are more likely to. And so it's another reason why those communities were able to recover more quickly during the foreclosure crisis. In the past, one of the big arguments about why not having rent control would be, oh, no one will build if you have rent control. And there are several studies mostly around comparing cities with and without control in New Jersey and with and without control in Canada. In both places, places that had rent control had, saw way more new construction in those communities. So it actually leads to it, which a lot of people speculate has to do with that when you have that stability, you just have an overall more thriving community. Because you have the jobs, you have the housing that you need together. Next slide. And then, as I was saying, it has been here for a long time. I say this because I just, I'm fifty, and I actually was at one of the, the many new, you know, organizing meetings as a baby. In, in Berkeley, my father actually was involved, was, was part of the movement to get rent control in, in Berkeley when I was a babe. But, and ironically, the fir, for, we had a thirty-year period where no one was passing rent control. And I had the great honor of writing the first ordinance that had been passed in the, you know, over a thirty-year gap, and that was the Richmond ordinance. And, you know, I think it's just, you know, there has been litigation particularly early on in, you know, the seventies and eighties. But the Supreme Court specific, you know, very clearly of California said that it's, you are allowed to have rent control. In twenty sixteen, when we had the Richmond ordinance, the California Apartment Association tried to sue. And they lost. Their attempted stay was denied. And they actually lost at the, the demur stage. And yeah, so they ended up dismissing their case. Mountain View also, there was litigation, which also ended in, obviously, the ordinance continuing as it is there today. The city of San Francisco, as recently as about a month ago. The San Francisco Apartment Association sued and, you know, the court once again said that, you know, this is a legitimate use of police powers. And in fact, basically told them, you know, that they you know, there was language in there that basically the court was like, come on. You know, this is a tried and true, this is part of our, the fabric of this, this, our state now. So just to, to really clarify that rent control is something that is very clear. There's no question that it is, is lawful.
Leah, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up in the next minute. We've exceeded the ten minutes.
Oh, sorry. This is actually the last slide. The other thing that I think is important to remember is that there's a constitutional right to a fair rate of return for landlords. And that, you know, most jurisdictions, you know, use the Consumer Price Index for the increase. Which essentially says the landlord continues to have the same amount that they, where they set the original rent. And I think that's important to remember that the landlords still in California maintain the right to set the original rent, which should reflect you know, what they need to cover their costs and have a reasonable fair return. And then the, the rent board would be the place they could go to if in their particular situation that wasn't enough, and then the rent board can, you know, allow them to do that.
But just thirty seconds to close, if I, if that's all right. So we just want to close by underscoring the point that we really believe Fairfax has an incredible opportunity to lead Marin County on this issue and live up to its values of being a fair, inclusive, and compassionate community. And by passing rent control, we can really collectively decide to put people's basic needs for safe and secure housing, for shelter above the additional profits of a very small number of landlords and realtors. What we can really decide is that Fairfax is for everyone. And I'll just note that this presentation was based on a model ordinance that we've shared with the council. To act upon, to act as a point of departure for implementing rent control here in Fairfax. And we would urge the council to take up that ordinance appropriately adapted at the earliest available opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you both. I'm, I'm going to open up for public comment.
Mayor, could I just add really quickly? We have like, you know, twice as many people as we normally have at our meeting, and I was wondering if you plan to slightly decrease the, the number, the amount of time for comment.
Yes, the public will be given two minutes to comment.
And just a quick question, Mayor. Before we go to public comment, would it be appropriate for our town attorney, Jenna Colson, just to speak to the limits of Costa Hawkins and perhaps also why typically rent control is done in larger jurisdictions? Or do you want to wait till after public comment?
I'd like to wait.
And that's, that's actually not true, that it's more larger.
Our town attorney speak to that when it's the appropriate time.
Okay, this is Michelle. Madam Mayor, are we ready for public comment? Yes, okay. I'm going to mute you, Leah, because it makes it easier for me to manage the public comment. Okay, first speaker is Barbara Bogard, and you are unmuted.
Hi, Barbara.
Good evening. I'm here this evening representing the Sierra Club, and I was told I would have four minutes because I'm representing an organization. Is that true?
That's true. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So as I said, I'm here this evening representing the Sierra Club and its hundreds of members who live in Fairfax and thousands of members who live throughout the county. The Sierra Club sent a letter to the town council, which I hope all of you have read. But we also think it's important to make a public statement voicing our strong support for a rent control and just cause evictions ordinance. Of course, we will work to see this ordinance passed in the ten other towns in Marin, as well as in unincorporated Marin, because that would have to happen for this to work. But as you all have every right to be proud of, Fairfax often leads the way on both environmental and social and racial justice issues. And we hope you will continue to do so by being the first town to pass such an ordinance. And model what can be done so the rest of Marin can follow your lead. I imagine some folks here tonight may wonder why the Sierra Club would care about an issue like rent control. And first of all, we do see rent control as an environmental climate change issue. When people who work in Fairfax can live in Fairfax, the result is much lower carbon emissions and air pollution from automobiles than if those folks have to live elsewhere and commute long distances because they can't afford to live in town. And as Jody mentioned earlier this evening, one of the two largest sources of carbon emissions in Fairfax, as it is elsewhere, is automobiles. So making it possible for people who work in Fairfax to continue to live there is one way to tackle this issue. Secondly, and as importantly, Sierra Club, not only on environmental issues, but also on social and racial justice issues. Because we understand the two are inextricably linked, and we can't hope to address one without addressing the other. It's really no surprise to any of us that Marin renters are disproportionately lower income, younger, and more racially diverse than homeowners. So if you really want to demonstrate a desire to keep working class, young people, and people of color in Fairfax. One of the most consequential actions you can take is to stabilize their rents. Looking at the statistics that Kirk was talking about. I, I really, it's amazing to me, seventy-one percent of Fairfax renters are low income, very low income, or extremely low income. And so it's not surprising that nearly half of those people are what we call rent burdened. They're already spending more than thirty percent of their income on rent. Which means their living situations right now are very precarious. They're basically what, you know, one, one significant rent raise away from having to leave town. I imagine all of us know lower income or young people or people of color, and not that those are mutually exclusive. Who really would like to live in Marin, but have left because they can't afford to live here. Any of us may be related to some people like that. So let's provide a safeguard for those folks who have somehow managed to stay here. By protecting them from uncontrolled rent increases and arbitrary evictions, so we don't lose any more of them. Thus, from a climate change and a social and racial justice perspective, Sierra Club strongly supports an ordinance that stabilizes rents and establishes just cause eviction protection for renters. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
The next speaker is Michael McIntosh. You're unmuted now.
Go ahead, Michael.
Oh, thank you. There's a different perspective to look at this. And I actually challenge what some of the comments were made by our presentation, and I appreciate their direction and want. And I'm speaking on behalf of all my tenants, so I certainly will do better, but I look forward to my four minutes. With the Costa Hawkins Act, and I'm glad Barbara brought this up, that precludes buildings with first occupancy of nineteen ninety-five forward to be put into rent control. Which means the rent control are only for our buildings that had first occupancy before nineteen ninety-five. And this doesn't include, include remodels or anything. Smaller rents or lower rents are generally with smaller buildings, smaller footprints, and or older buildings. So when we put this rent control on, it really encourages, as they were saying that it stimulated all this building, that's true. It encourages developers to wipe out all this old housing and put in new housing so they don't have the burden of rent control. So really look at the end game. The other difficulty with rent control is, let's say you see somebody and you know that they can't really afford the rent. Will it preclude your opportunity from extending that opportunity to them, just saying, okay, well, listen, if you get this job, or if you get this raise, we'll raise your rent at that time, great, that's a nice, easy way to go. But with rent control, if you don't come in at the highest mark and then start pushing each year for what that CPI is, whatever that rent control is, and pass on everything else. You're going to be left behind. So it really takes away our ability to say, you can only afford five hundred dollars this month and next month. Great. You can't do that. So even if a couple moved in and one moved out and one said, nope, I want that same little rent. You're stuck paying that rent. So how much would encourage landlord to extend those opportunities? So I really encourage you to look at the end result, and even from their own statements, that these rent-controlled cities stimulated greater growth. Yes, at market rate units without rent control. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Next speaker, excuse me, next speaker is Allison Hamburg. You're unmuted.
Thank you. My name's Allison Hamburg, and my wife and I were renters in Fairfax from February twenty twenty-one through January twenty twenty-two. Unfortunately, we moved out of our housing after only eleven months. After our landlord informed us that at our twelve-month mark, she would be raising the rent by up to ten percent, the maximum allowable percentage by California law. We're professionals in our late thirties with master's degrees. While I make a decent salary as a research consultant, we are still building our financial foundation, and the lack of rent control threatened our housing stability. Further, we believe our landlord instituted the rent increase in a retaliatory manner following our request for repairs. While we know this is illegal and we are aware of our right to landlord-tenant mediation. The emotional distress of facing a retaliatory rent increase soured our experience as Fairfax renters. If rent control was in place, the situation could have been avoided. We moved to Fairfax from Oakland because of our love of nature and because of the progressive politics of the area where we felt more comfortable as a same-sex couple. We loved living in Fairfax for the short time that we did and hope that we might be able to return someday. With housing prices as they are, the only way that us, as well as many other working families, younger folks, as well as seniors can make ends meet in Fairfax is to rent. Rent control would provide real housing security and stability to Fairfax renters. Fairfax has an amazing opportunity here, and I urge you to lead the county by being the first to pass rent control. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
The next, the next speaker is Brian Poindexter. You're unmuted now.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Town Council. This has been another wonderful example of civic engagement, and I appreciate you as always for hosting us. One thing I would like to request right off the bat is that if the town attorney has a chance to speak about this legislation, I'd really like to hear from the DSA folks. And them to be given a chance to, to dialogue or to respond to some of those comments. I don't know if that's possible under usual structure, but I would really appreciate it. My perspective comes as someone who has looked for housing at a couple of points in the last two years around Fairfax. And it's interesting to hear that ten percent is the maximum allowable rental increase because just based on anecdotal evidence, I think I've seen places that are twenty or thirty percent higher in terms of rent over just the last year. This is the kind of thing that can cause a lot of displacement in our community. And I think it's the opposite of what we're trying to build as a town, which is a community where people feel engaged for the long haul. They feel like they can invest in their, their community and their civic responsibilities. Where they can engage in the sorts of long-term projects that we're talking about, whether it's Climate Action Committee, whether it's Open Space Committee. All of those things tend to be best done by people who are going to stay in the community and be involved in the, the shape that it takes for a long-term future. So to see really big disruptions in rental properties and rental prices as a person who rents here. It's hard to imagine myself here for the long haul in the future if those things remain in place. And I would just point out that this is very tied to some of the, the points around development that we heard earlier. This is a place where there's not a whole lot of supply of certain types of units. That supply is very low. It's hard to find housing, even if you're looking at a certain price bracket. And I, I think because of that, we're very subject to economic disruptions, things that happen in the Bay Area, things that happen nationally. Which can cause such high price spikes to begin with. So I think these issues are linked, and I just wanted to bring some attention to that. Wish I had more time, but that's all I'll offer for now.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Josh B., and you're unmuted now.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. My name is Josh Bastacki. I'm a twenty-four-year-old living in Fairfax in an apartment with my partner. I grew up just over the hill in San Geronimo and went to college in Portland, where I took dual degrees in psychology and biology and spent four summers working in drug addiction neuroscience and treatment at UCSF. After graduating, I decided to move back to the beautiful landscape and community where I was raised. When I decided to move back to the Bay, it was very difficult to find suitable work in my field, drug addiction neuroscience, that allowed me to earn enough to live anywhere in the Bay Area. In the end, I worked at UCSF and spent fifty percent of my income on rent before utilities, but then lost my job due to the pandemic. Since then, my meager savings and my partner's income have barely been enough to support us living in Marin. have barely been enough to support us living in Marin. We lived briefly with her parents, but had to move promptly after her father died in a car accident. We looked for rental housing for months across Marin, hoping to make a home in Fairfax, but found almost nothing. After two months of searching, we were only able to land our current home because I was up at three AM sick after getting my COVID booster shot and was the first person to respond to a late-night post on Craigslist. The reason I support rent control is simple. We do not have spare cash. We want to live in the county we love and we were both raised in. Housing instability is stressful. If our rents increased by even a few hundred dollars a month, we would not be able to stay here. Nothing stands in the way of those increases coming once our lease ends in a few months. And I know that we're not alone. Countless friends of mine have left or chosen not to come to the Bay Area because they can't afford it. One friend of mine said that he would have liked to stay in West Marin, but felt that the cost of living and housing was so high that he had little to no chance of saving and being able to live a more prosperous life than his parents. So he moved out of the Bay. My family moved to Fairfax in nineteen sixty-four and has lived in West Marin since then. I grew up here, performed music here, volunteered and worked here. I love it. It's my home. I know that it'll only be possible for me and so many others to persist in this place we love and call home if we can afford to live here. That's why I support rent control. Housing is a human right, and rent control affirms and supports that right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Chris Organ, and Chris, you're unmuted now.
Hi, Chris Organ. I'm with the California Alliance for Retired Americans, and I just want to take a moment. CARA is a very diverse organization. Seniors are a diverse population. And we have landlords and tenants in, in the organization and debate these things. But when this came up for debate, the proposal for an ordinance in Fairfax passed unanimously, and we have sent you a letter that I would ask you to read. The letter of support for the, the idea of establishing rent control in Fairfax. Earlier, Jody Timms, on behalf of Age Friendly Fairfax, talked about how seniors are living. And you've heard about young people in this situation. But seniors in particular, as they're growing older, are having major problems. We're seeing, we're seeing more and more isolation, particularly during COVID. We think that one of the things that, that drives a problem is, is the increases in rents and the change that caused, that's caused as seniors have grown so isolated, they no longer have the advocates and the support in the community that they once had. They are more vulnerable. They become homeless now much more often, and there's a higher rate of bankruptcy among seniors. So for that reason, and many of the reasons that you'll see in our, our, our letter, we are supporting the rent control, and we urge you to think about the seniors in this problem as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Megan Matic, and you're unmuted now.
Hi, everyone. My name is Megan Matic. I'm a resident of Fairfax, and I'm also a renter. I currently work at a nonprofit that serves children and families in Marin. And like Allison mentioned, I have a master's degree. I make a decent salary that would be considered livable in many areas of the country. But I'm still paying more than thirty percent of my income to rent. It's important and necessary for me to be able to live and work in the community that I, I love and that I serve. And I'm worried that if rents continue to rise, I won't be able to do that. I also realize I'm in a privileged position. I'd be able to bounce back if that were the case. But I worry in particular about the children and families that I work with, many of them who are low-income, former foster youth, families of color who are being displaced from the place they call home because of rising rents in Marin. I chose to live in Fairfax because it reflects the values I seek in the world: community, justice, respect for all. Keeping rents fair and keeping neighbors in their homes would be the right thing for our town to do. And I urge you to move forward to establish rent control and just cause eviction protections in Fairfax. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is Diara K. You are unmuted now. You may have to unmute yourself. Diara? We can't hear you. You have to unmute yourself.
Diara? Can you unmute yourself?
We might just want to move on to the next person and come back.
Okay. Let's go with Martha.
Okay. Martha Pearl, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on such a very important and timely topic. My name is Martha Pearl, and I live and own my house in Fairfax. As a landlord, I am most, and I, and most landlords I know have been able to reduce our costs of holding our rental property by taking advantage of the low interest rates and refinancing our mortgages in the past few years. My payments went down, so I passed the savings to my tenants so they could share in my, in my lower costs. My payments went down, so I passed the savings. And I believe that my upside lives in the property itself, not burdening my tenants with the rents they can't afford. We need supportable rents in our, in our, in order to be able to retain a labor force in Marin County. We all have heard the statistics, and we all patronize unemployed, lower-wage workers. But we don't seem to want to help those very essential workers where they live. An annual cap on rent increases does not mean a landlord is not allowed to raise rents. It simply means that landlords may raise the rent in a sustainable amount that the tenant can afford and also covers the landlord in, in a cost to landlord based on inflation. If only landlords and employers could understand how rent control and higher wages could profitably impact all residents of our county, we wouldn't be here tonight. The alternative to rent control is people living outside the areas in which they work, which negatively impacts everyone's quality of life by adding traffic and air pollution and further burdening our essential workers because it takes them longer to get to work and takes time away from caring for their own families, which we know can lead to devastating effects. Please help support our workforce in Marin by passing a rent control measure with an annual cap on rent increases based on inflation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I just wanted to note to all who can't see what I'm seeing. We have thirty hands raised, and I'm hearing some very unique comments. I'm not hearing a lot of repetition. But if you do simply want to say that you support this, or you don't support this, or you echo the comments and keep your comments to a minimum, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try Diara once more. You're unmuted, Diara. Can you unmute yourself? Okay.
I'm sorry, Diara.
We'll move on. Next is Michael, followed by Saskia Hicks. Michael, you're unmuted now.
Hello, my name is Michael Martin. I am a local chef, restaurateur in the area. I also rent here in Fairfax. I live with my brother, who is my roommate, who is a bus driver from Marin. And I just wanted to say that I am in support of rent control, especially because while we do live a, you know, relatively modest and comfortable life currently, increasing rent rates do affect us. And we are both people that provide, you know, jobs to the community and also bring people to their jobs in the community. And, you know, losing out on housing and the ability to afford our housing really takes that away from us and takes us away from this great community. That's all.
Thank you, Michael.
Sorry, I was muted. Next speaker, Saskia Hicks. You're unmuted.
Hi, yes, thank you for this opportunity. I'm a Fairfax resident and renter, and I also support establishing rent control in Fairfax. When I just listened to the presentation, it was clear to me that we're not asking for radical wealth redistribution. We're just looking to give some of the folks that keep our town such an amazing place to live a little stability. I've lived in three other countries and six cities or towns in the US. And even though this is the smallest and most expensive apartment I've ever rented, Fairfax is by far my favorite place to live. I know that I'll be leaving Fairfax in a couple of years, but in fifteen years from now, my husband and I will both be retired from the military, and we would love to be able to return to Fairfax. We won't be able to buy a place here, and we're not sure if we'll be able to rent by then either, if the rent continues to greatly outpace inflation. I understand there's a lot of complexity here, but overall, I urge you to consider the role of well-constructed just cause eviction protections and rent control in the battle to keep Fairfax special for everyone. And then I'd also just like to add that my opinion is purely my own and not the opinion of the United States military. So thank you.
Next speaker is Julie Motz, followed by Rick Hamer. Julie, you're unmuted now. Julie Motz, you're unmuted. You might have to unmute yourself.
Yes, okay. My name is Julie Motz. I'm seventy-nine years old. I've been living in the same apartment in Fairfax for the last fifteen years. I'm a healer by profession. And I have to say that my rent increases have been gradual, but they have mounted up. I, I totaled up. My rent has increased thirty percent in the time I've lived here, and my income has not increased anywhere near like that. My landlord during COVID, because my practice was decimated, did reduce the rent slightly for a few months, but it's, but it's back up where it was, and my, my practice has not come back. And so I would just like the security of knowing that there aren't, there won't be, you know, any sudden and unmanageable rent rises. I'd like to stay where I am. I love the town. It's a great community. And so I support rent stabilization.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Rick Hamer, followed by Larry Bragman. Rick, you're unmuted.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Council. It's since two thousand nineteen when we visited our just cause and mandatory mediation. We were among the early jurisdictions in Marin and the state to do that. And it's time to revisit this, especially in the lens of the targets of our housing element coming up, which needs to be done at the end of this year, when we also have a factor of market rate housing being encouraged through the new state mandates. So this is a great time, by the end of the year, in order to work together with the housing elements and modify or update our rent ordinances in order to properly reflect what our new housing targets will be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Larry Bragman, followed by Ellen Lovelidge. Larry, you're unmuted now.
Good evening again, Larry Bragman, Thirty Hickory Road. And I'm speaking as a resident and not as an elected official. So, you know, when I first moved to Marin, there were many rental opportunities for new residents, younger residents. Many single-family homes were rentals, and you could find a room in a home. So the rental market was much different. In the, in the years, the more recent years, the price of housing has gone up so much in Marin. That's no longer the case. So as the price of single-family homes has risen, the stock of affordable rentals has diminished. And that's caused those rentals, those affordable rentals, to rise. So it really seems like we're at a point where we need to protect the renters just to balance out the, the power and the negotiating positions between the two sides of the market, between the owners and, and the renters. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, I've also been practicing law for a few decades here in Marin. And I can tell you, until very recently, renters had very few, if any, protections. And most renters, if faced with an eviction, even a good renter, not a nightmare renter, a good renter who is faced with an unfair rent increase is not going to fight an eviction because they don't want to be blackballed by the rest of the landlord community by having an eviction on their record. So even a good renter, who's, who has been a good tenant and taken care of the property, facing that kind of situation, really has no protection. And I think it's really time, and I, and I hope you guys take this up and, and have the courage to take this journey. I know it's not an easy one. I know there's a lot of complexity to it. But you've shown your grit before. And I think it's time to, to show it again. So thanks a lot.
Next speaker is Ellen Lovelidge, followed by Raniero Miranda. And Ellen, you're unmuted.
Great. Thanks to the DSA for presenting, and thanks to the, to the mayor and council for hosting this presentation. I'm a renter in Fairfax, and I support rent control. Marin has certain negative community health outcomes that are associated with our poor ratings and equity and housing. And this is our opportunity to become a more inclusive town, become that example throughout the county, throughout the state, and throughout the country. And these solutions for housing are aligned with our climate goals that we're all so concerned about. And thank you for having me.
The next speaker is Raniero Miranda, followed by Emily Conway. And you're unmuted now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much for listening to me. I am a Latino psychologist, and I used to live in San Francisco. Wanted to move here because I love nature. I was a little hesitant because I didn't see much diversity here and saw a lot of segregation of communities of color. But I decided, this is, I come here a lot, that I wanted to live here and maybe bring some of that diversity with myself and my family. And I have not been disappointed. I was, we felt very welcome. Except that we wanted to come to Fairfax in two thousand and seven, but could not do it because we always had to find affordable housing. So whatever we could find in Marin, we went there. So finally, I'm here in Fairfax now, where I always wanted to be. I want to stay here. But it's always been a struggle. I, I work for the community. I associate with many communities, many agencies here in the county. I could be making more money if I worked privately, but I work with the community. So my income is limited by that, but I feel good about what I do. But I struggle with rent as much as my clients do. And what I want to say really is that the toll that it takes for not being able to afford your housing is great in mental health. You know, to have that weight on your shoulders that I won't be able to pay the rent. Or since I cannot pay the rent, I have to bring some other family into my house, and then we have to squeeze many members in one place where people have no privacy. This happens a lot in this county. Families living together because they cannot afford to live. Many people mention all the people that work here, love to be here, have to commute because they have to move out. I don't want to be one of those people that moved out. I love this community. I do a lot for this community. I want to be able to afford it. I want to feel welcome. I want to feel welcome. In the same way that I felt welcome emotionally, I want to feel that I am welcome by being able to afford to live in this place. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Emily Conway, followed by Jess Lerner. And Emily, you're unmuted now.
Hello, my name is Emily Conway, and I was raised in Fairfax. I lived there from 2005 to 2017. In our 12 years as renters in Fairfax, my family was forced to move three times due to rent hikes. Each move brought with it indescribable stress, anxiety, and hardship for my family as we struggled to find a way to stay in the little town we loved and where I was in school. At our last home in Fairfax, where we lived for my last two years of high school, my mom paid $2,400 a month, and she and I had to share a bedroom. Despite our financial struggles and the stress of barely getting by each month, my family made the conscious decision each and every day to stay in Fairfax. They chose to do without so that I could stay in the amazing school system and grow up in a safe community whose political and social values aligned with my family's own. After I graduated high school, my family made the difficult decision to move out of our beloved Fairfax to Petaluma. I tell my story today because it is not unique. Fairfax was a beautiful place to grow up, but the price of the safety, supportive community, and excellent education that come with living in Fairfax is quickly becoming out of reach for most families. My family scraped by for many years, sacrificing a lot to keep my childhood stable, but I know of many who weren't able to make it work. Families pushed out of Fairfax, leaving behind the town they love because the cost of staying was even worse than the disruption brought by leaving. Council members, I ask you today to support both an annual rent cap and a strengthening of just cause eviction protections. Please don't allow Fairfax landlords to continue pushing out the families who make the town what it is. Love and protect this town's residents, just as we who have lived here love and protect the town. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jess Lerner, followed by Maddie Hirschfield. Jess, you're unmuted now.
Hi, Town Council. I just want to say a few words and not take up a lot of time, but first I just want to say in listening to everyone's stories, even though most, none of us, we all say that they're not unique, and we all have our own stories, but they're very similar. I feel deeply, deeply moved. You can't see my face, but I've been brought almost tears listening to some of these stories and knowing how common they are. And I want to just say that in every single comment that has come before me that supports rent control and rent caps, I fully, fully support everything that has been said, every single aspect of these arguments, whether it has to do with the stories you're hearing about losing community members and younger people who are part of this community and dedicated to this community, whether people can live where they work and not have to commute and impact climate change, and also their own lives and every other part of this discussion. So fully support that, and we'll share my personal story with you another time or send you a letter about it and happy to describe it, but also have struggled with living here, believing I could stay here and renting over the past five years. So just want to say I support this. Thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing you support this effort and keep our community here in Fairfax that want to live here.
The next speaker is Maddie Hirschfield, followed by Sunanda Marcus. Maddie, you're unmuted now.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Mayor Hellman, council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. However, I'm only going to take a very brief time because so many wonderful things have been said. I'm so impressed by all the speakers and the love for this little town that's expressed. It's very, very moving. I really have nothing more to add than what's been said, except that I'm so blessed to hear these comments tonight, and I surely hope that you move forward with rent control. It sounds like it's really, really needed. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Sunanda Marcus, followed by Veronica Garretts. Sunanda, you're unmuted. Sunanda, you might have to unmute yourself.
Sorry. Oh, sorry. Okay. Excuse me. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. Much of what I would have said has already been said, and I am very moved by many of these words. I would like to say that a lot of, I know several families, and I have families and friends and neighbors who live here in Fairfax, who have young children, and their children go to the schools here, and they're so fortunate. They feel so fortunate to have them be in these excellent schools. And it's also for the sake of them, and the fear that the rents will be increased so that they have to leave this community. And I really urge you to take this step and just take the lead and to put in place a rent control and just cause ordinance. Thank you.
The next speaker is Veronica Garretts, followed by Matthew Estipona. And Veronica, you're unmuted.
Thank you, Michelle. Echoing the gratitude for the vulnerability and the power of what everybody's shared so far, I feel really honored to be listening in right now. I'm grateful that I live here. I am a Fairfax resident. I'm a renter, and I am a mother as well, a primary care provider, solo mother, and feel very strongly about the value of the opportunity for us to pass this ordinance and to help stabilize rent here in Fairfax and feel so stoked at the idea that we could lead our county with this move. I feel kind of a little bit in awe or disbelief that we're actually talking about this, and it feels like it could be a potential because it has absolutely been a huge struggle to live here. And I will continue to try to make it work to live here and want my son to be able to live here and know that that is only possible if this ordinance were to move forward. Beyond my own personal story, I want to say that as a member of Serge Marin, standing up for racial justice Marin, our policy committee has unanimously supported this ordinance as well. And we're, as a larger organization, going to be discussing it this weekend in terms of the potential of moving forward with giving it our full stamp of approval. So just to put that on the radar too. And I don't know if this website was shared already in the presentation. Thank you, Curtis and Leah, for taking the time to do what you're doing. It feels like you're offering us this gift of just coming to us with so much of the work already done. But this website, if you want to sign the petition to move forward with rent control or stabilization in Marin is at MarinRentControl.com. So if that's not been shared yet, you could go there and sign the petition and donate to this work as well. And that's my time. Thank you.
Next speaker is Matthew Estipona, followed by Deborah Benson. Matthew, you're unmuted.
Good evening, council members. My name is Matthew Estipona, community organizer with Disability Justice Marin, and we are a newly started coalition that aims to promote the intersection of disability rights, racial equity, and economic security within our community. And we strongly support passage of the rent control and just cause evictions ordinance. According to the Association for Bay Area Governments 2021 Fairfax Housing Needs Data Report, people with disabilities make up approximately 9.7% of Fairfax residents and are at a high risk for housing insecurity, homelessness, and institutionalization. This ordinance would be a monumental step towards putting their needs at the forefront and serve as a catalyst for continued change. And we understand that our affordability crisis will not be solved overnight. But I ask that if this ordinance were to prevent a fraction of people with disabilities from ending up on the street, then that is a policy worth pursuing. While this policy is not the only solution to our affordability crisis, nor should it be a silver bullet, it is an important tool to help and protect people with disabilities who are often on fixed incomes and susceptible to changes and market fluctuations. I've seen and heard upfront how housing insecurity and the drastic rent hikes within the county are driving many people with disabilities to the brink of homelessness and to end up on the street. These are not normal times, and the crisis calls for new solutions to the existing problems that have festered for a long period of time. If we want to make Fairfax a safe and inclusive place to live for the disabled community, there needs to provide housing security and stability for renters with disabilities. We urge you to support the rent control ordinance and to fight for the rights of people with disabilities to live with dignity and security. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Deborah Benson, followed by Richard A. Deborah, you're unmuted.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, council members, for hearing me. I'm listening to what everyone is saying. I was a single mother who had her rent raised 60% over nine years. I was fortunately an entrepreneur who was able to dig my heels in and make enough money to meet that. So I'm hearing everybody. Years ago, when this issue came up before the council, the older council, there were landlords, local landlords, who set their rents low, who said that if something like this was enacted, they would have to raise the rents as, you know, to meet a level, a starting point. So there's something there. Then there are two kinds of landlords. Rents are set by supply and demand. There are two kinds of landlords. There are long-term landlords here in Fairfax, and there are short-term landlords here in Fairfax. And I don't think it's fair to impose rent control on long-term landlords while allowing short-term landlords, Airbnb, to make their units unaffordable at whatever rates they want. So I think it's really complicated. There's more to the picture than just housing the people who aren't making enough money to pay high rents. So we have to look at the whole picture. How can you not look at the people who are taking affordable units off of the market and renting them out as hotels while penalizing the long-term landlords who are not doing that? I don't know. I think there's more to it than meets the eye. Thank you.
The next speaker is Richard Applebaum, followed by Joe McGarry. Richard, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Thanks, council. While I'm currently a homeowner, I've been a renter for most of my life. And when I first arrived in Fairfax nine years ago, I was a renter here as well. I too was unfortunate to have one of the gouging landlords that was jacking around the maximum capacity every year until I finally bought my own place. While it is a complicated issue, and there may be occasional landlord that is penalized unfairly, action has to be taken. We need something to balance this out, have some type of corrective measures. I lived in large cities for most of my life, and I could not have had the lifestyle that I had were I not under the benefit of rent control for upwards of 20, 30 years. And in my short time here, I literally know tens of people that have been displaced out of our town. Artists, musicians, yoginis, herbal tincture makers, childcare workers, lots of people that live here that do a non-traditional lifestyle. They're not necessarily office workers, and they're gone. They're gone because the little cottage house they had, that was 600 bucks. They got kicked out. They told a story about they want to bring their child home and whatever, and two years later, it was 1,800 bucks. And it's gone so far askew. We had the ripple effect of everything that happened with the tech boom. San Francisco having two-bedroom apartments for 4,200, that reached us. That has reached us. The mentality shifted here. We're so out of whack that, you know, something has to be done, whether it's following inflation, cost of living index. You know, smart people can kind of figure it out. Yes, this is a national issue. Renters should get the same tax deductions that homeowners get. There's lots of things that you can't do as a council, but at least take a first step forwards because Marin frankly has just been very resistant of this. And it's part of that kind of sense of Marin entitlement and being kind of one of the richest counties in the country, and something has to be done, or it's just absurd. So please, please do something. Start it at least, you know. Groups can come together to talk about best ways to do it, but something needs to be done. Take action. Thank you.
Next speaker is Joe McGarry, followed by Liesel Blash. Joe, you're unmuted.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, council, for being here, and I want to thank the Marin DSA for the super in-depth presentation and all the work and energy that they've been putting into this important campaign. And yeah, really want to thank the mayor and vice mayor and that you're already like leading the county just by like bringing this presentation to the public and being the first town in Marin to start this discussion. So I want to acknowledge that and say thank you because I know this movement is, needs a foundation, a building block, and you all are providing that. And a lot of what Richard's just said, I want to echo a little bit, and in the context of, I work at Good Earth, and I've shared in the past that 25% of our employees at the Good Earth Fairfax location actually live in town. And that's the current moment, and kind of without like having super strong data, but going back about 10 years. And we estimate that that number was about 17% higher, and then even going back 15 years, we think maybe it was as high as 60%. And we attribute that to displacement, you know, that we, anecdotally, we discussed, and a lot of folks who've left the Good Earth because they just couldn't simply afford to live here anymore. And yeah, a lot of the discussion we've given is to the issue of building more affordable housing, and I just think it's really important to, there's a lot of hurdles to that. I think it's critical to focus on maintaining our base of most affordable housing right now. So that's why I ask you to support this. And I support an annual rent cap and strengthening of just cause eviction.
The next speaker is Liesel Blash, followed by Jack Buckhorn. And Liesel, you're up.
Okay, so my name is Liesel Blash. I'm on our Town's Affordable Housing Committee, although I am speaking tonight on my own behalf. I lived for 20 years in a rent-controlled apartment in San Francisco. And at first, the rent was a little too high for us, but over time, we were able to go back to school, get better jobs, and save to buy a home. Our friends who are not in rent-controlled apartments were forced out of San Francisco as their rents rose beyond what they could pay. So when we left our apartment, the rent was $950. The next day, it was $2,500, and a couple of years later, it went up to $3,500 for a one-bedroom apartment. So we credit rent control with allowing us a couple of moderate income to save to purchase a small home here in Marin. Our landlord continued to build and acquire apartment buildings around San Francisco during this time, so rent control did not put a dent in his operations. Rent control really allows people to stay in their communities and contribute to those communities, whether they decide to stay for the long term or move on to other opportunities. It allows people to save for buying a home, putting their children through college, and retirement. This is not possible for those who are paying half or more of their income to rent, and that's young people whose opportunities are being cut off, but older people also, who often have fixed incomes, are really in trouble when the rents go up. So I want to make sure that we keep in mind that that's, different age ranges are affected in different ways. So rent stabilization is really just part of a toolbox of strategies to further housing justice. We can build more deed-restricted affordable housing to help low-income renters live in Fairfax in conjunction with implementing rent stabilization to help prevent displacement of existing tenants renting in the private market. Rent stabilization is really worthy of serious consideration, and I hope you will do so. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Jack Buckhorn, followed by Mallory G. And Jack, you're unmuted now.
Great. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Jack Buckhorn. I'm the executive director of the North Bay Labor Council. I want to take a second to thank all of the great public comment that's already been given this evening. It really clearly outlines the problem with affordability in Fairfax. I want to make it very clear that the purpose of the proposed ordinance is to promote neighborhood and community stability, healthy housing, and affordability for renters in Fairfax by controlling rent and arbitrary evictions to the greatest extent allowable under California law. There's a real shortage of decent, safe, affordable housing in Fairfax. The rental vacancy rate is 0.6%. That's incredibly low, and we've heard what that means to the residents. My research shows that the average rent for an 809-square-foot apartment is $2,383 right now. I would ask that you show leadership like other high-income or high-cost areas such as Berkeley, Beverly Hills, East Palo Alto, Hayward, Los Angeles, Los Gatos, Oakland, Palm Springs, San Francisco, San Jose, Santa Monica, and West Santa Monica, and West Hollywood, who have already adopted rent stabilization policies. So I really urge you to put this on a future agenda and take full advantage of the power you have to bring stability to the wonderful, wonderful town of Fairfax. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mallory G., followed by Pfeffer, or Pfeffer. Mallory, you're unmuted now.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. First, I want to say I am on the Affordable Housing Committee, but I'm not speaking for the committee. And I also want to say that affordable housing in Marin is an oxymoron. It's just, it's not, I mean, people have to make a lot of money to have affordable housing here. And the people who work in Fairfax should be able to live here. The people who serve us should be able to live here. I am in no way affected by this. I have a home. It's paid for. I don't need to do this at all, except I think it's really unfair. The entire world that's getting wrecked, both environmentally and in any other way, is run by greed. And I would like to see that not become part of what's motivating Fairfax. We don't need more taxes for the people to, you know, to make it harder for everybody. And for me, this is such a non-brainer. We should not even be having this discussion. It should just be an easy way in to keep rent control here for people who need to live here, who want to live here. I mean, it's redundant to have, to have this discussion when it's just so, for me, very obvious that it doesn't need to even be a question. Yes, definitely rent control. And if people who own places want, need more money, I don't believe that. Okay? Maybe there's a very few people who are depending on it, but I just, I just want to go on record to say that I agree with pretty much what everybody has said.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Okay, we have two more members of the public speaking, and then we're going to close the public comment.
Okay. The first speaker is Pfeffer, followed by Tuna Fish Monkey Mind. Pfeffer, you're unmuted.
Hi. Thank you, PJ Pfeffer, here to want to thank everybody that's already spoken out on behalf of rent control. In my opinion, thankfully, there hasn't been that much comment opposed. I've heard some people bring up certain points and want to just use some of my time to speak on my opinion on that, which is, yes, there are opposing views. But at the end of the day, you have to think about what concerns you're weighing against each other. And in this case, it's the concern of somebody who owns property to be able to raise the rent in one year more than the Consumer Price Index versus the ability for somebody to be able to afford their home as best they can. This isn't a perfect solution because I don't know that the numbers of people who are rent burdening would go away overnight because of this issue. But like the prior caller said to me, it just feels like a no-brainer. At the end of the day, it is helping someone and I can't understand the harm other than somebody who owns property not being able to earn a profit in excess of the Consumer Price Index. I just don't understand why that interest is more important than the interest of somebody able to afford their home. Thank you.
And the next speaker is Tuna Fish. You're unmuted now.
There we go. You can hear me?
Yes.
I support rent control, and it is problematic and has issues. I mean, we have, what, less than 3% vacancy rate? Popular place. I've lived in garages. My first home was a bakery truck. I've pretty much camped out in chicken coops. Now I've got a house, lived in a lot of houses. Are we entitled to live wherever we want to? And yet, it's, you know, it hurts to get forced out of a community that you grew up in or you lived in. It's like nobody's kids can afford to live here. Most of the people that I grew up with aren't here anymore. And in some ways, nothing's really changed, except it's accelerated from the 70s when the price of houses accelerated from $20,000 or $30,000 to $70,000, which that was one big wave of forcing peoples out. And then up to 150, which was like incredibly a lot of money. And then up to like 300,000, 600,000. It's just, it's, it keeps on moving along. What about wage control or a basic living wage? None of the people working in town can afford to buy a house. We don't have a diverse or healthy community, really. You know, I said this already, friend. Most of the people I know have been displaced for as long as I can remember, starting, okay. Underneath it all is a lot of humans on a struggling planet, many other life forms besides us. Human ecosystems, drought, flood, fire. Do low-rent landlords need to raise rents before being locked in? And what about the administration of it? Great if it is well-run and well-administered. But I personally have a distrust of bureaucracy. What if it's run by, what are the checks and controls of it being run? How do we know that we're not going to get, like someone like Putin running this thing, who basically has an attitude about some people and not other people?
Thank you, Sierra. Your time is up.
Anyway, landlords are not bad people, you know. And for too many people living in Marin, it's focusing on every waking dollar. And underneath it all.
Thank you, Sierra. Your time is up. Thank you. Okay, we are closing the public comment and bringing it back to council. Since Ms. Simon Weisberg has the multi-decade experience in this area, I'm going to ask her to share specifics in relation to Barbara's question, but I also just wanted, as a point of clarity, advise that 97% of housing units in Fairfax were built before 1995. And rent control, as I understand it, and I'd like Leah to confirm, but rent control does not apply to single-family homes. So I think those are two important clarifying data points. And I'll hand it back over to you, Leah, for a very brief response, if you will.
Yeah, absolutely. You cannot, you cannot extend rent control protections to single-family homes or condominiums. And you can't extend it to multifamily, which means, you know, essentially two or more that were built before 1995. Is this better? Not echoed?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. And those restrictions are, you know, that's, those are the rules across the state. And the ordinance suggestions that you are provided, you know, follow those guidelines. It's also common, obviously, you don't, you know, hospitals aren't covered by rent control. And there are a couple of other. If you look at the document that DSA has provided, you know, there are other kinds of housing that aren't covered. But, you know, the Costa Hawkins only speaks to the issue of condos, single-family homes, as well as anything built after 1995.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Councilmember Kohler.
Yeah, well, I think it's time to do some deliberations or discussion. I realize it's not an action item. But let me just say a few words. I was a renter until I was 45 years old. I've also couch-served. I've also lived in cars. So I get it. And I am a supporter of rent control, but there is a but. And the only but that I have, first of all, I want to just bring back to a couple of you who weren't on the council. In 2018, I brought the Source of Income Anti-Discrimination Ordinance to the council. And that's against Section 8 or other voucher holders. In 2019, I brought Just Cause and Mandatory Mediation for Rent Increases to this council, which they were all three unanimously supported. I wanted to make Just Cause a little bit tighter, and the council at the time agreed to not as tight as what the folks here presented. But I want to say where I came to that. And we were the second jurisdiction in the county to do so. And that was because the county did it first. But what happened was I was on a group called the Assessment of Fair Housing Committee that was countywide. There were only two electeds that were chosen to be on that. The rest were NGOs or CBOs, such as People Representing Disabled, Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California Legal Aid, and others. And what we did is we made a list of recommendations that we brought to the county. And the very top of our list was Just Cause eviction. And we also had other recommendations. The county thankfully stepped up and did Just Cause eviction. But we also had other recommendations. And one of our recommendations was, and there was quite a list. And as far as I know, really, none of it's been acted on, was that the county set up a rent control board and a hearing officer to deal with the administrative requirements of doing rent control that would serve for the county as a whole. And what we wanted was that, for example, if Fairfax wanted to be the first jurisdiction to do rent control, that the very significant administrative work and significant staffing would be handled by the county for all jurisdictions in the county. That hasn't been acted on. When I met with the DSA prior to this meeting, and I think everyone else did as well separately or together, I'm not sure how that worked, I brought that up. And I said, I'd really like you guys to lobby the county to set that up. Because a small jurisdiction, it's not simple, and it's very burdensome. And while I do support rent control, I'd like to see that that function is handled elsewhere. It's not a matter of, you know, hiring one staff person. And I also want to bring up the point that in 2014, Councilmember Bragman, at that time was a council member, brought rent control to our council. And about a meeting or two later, profusely apologized and brought it back. And what he said at the time, and this is a quote from the staff report, "A rent control ordinance in Fairfax would require a significant dedication of public funds for staffing, research, and dispute resolution, which the town can ill afford. It will also distract and disrupt our community from the more important housing element work that lays ahead for the town in the coming months." Funny, we're here again. And so while I support rent control and I, I listen very carefully to things that people said and read all the emails, I truly believe there's a problem, but it's a county-wide problem. It's not unique to Fairfax. And I'd like to see for once that the county takes on the very difficult work of the Rent Control Board, as well as the Hearing Officer, the Administrative Officer, and deals with the administrative aspects of this before we consider doing an ordinance and somehow figure out how to do this with very little staff. A rent control board doesn't act on their own. It's like, oh, I like the planning commission, requires staffing and such. So I'd like us to do this a little more deliberately. And that's my two cents. And I also think that I would respectfully say that when I ask for the town attorney to give us more direction, I think it would be better for us to hear from the town attorney rather than someone else. Thank you.
Any other comments? Vice Mayor Cacciano?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, to the question of whether or not it's appropriate to have the attorney immediately weigh in. I think historically, what I've seen is if we have questions after a presentation, we might ask our guests to clarify things. And then we might come back and ask the town attorney to weigh in on stuff. So I think it was just a matter of process. But I'm, I've been really amazed by the the fact that we got wind of this campaign having, you know, hundreds and hundreds of signatures and thought that this might be something that's worth bringing up as we do strategic planning, as we have new folks come onboard in our town, a variety of staff members who the public have seen tonight, and then the outpouring of organizational and residential support for looking into this. And I totally respect all of the amazing work you've done in the past, Councilmember Kohler. I think the challenge for me is the support of rent control, but not now and not by us, is hard to to accept, given the precarious nature of renters and our housing situation. And since Liz Darby and the folks at the county came last fall and presented, it seems like there's a real opportunity to discuss whether or not we might be able to avoid losing some of the lower rental rates that we still have to this day, even though the median's still quite high, but not compared to some of our other communities regionally, or at least in the county. And so I'm interested in having this discussion move forward and having staff, you know, come back with something after looking at what this group has brought to us. And I think we owe it to our renters to investigate this stuff, especially as we're talking about housing affordability and the housing crisis and all these other capacities. It only seems right. And I should mention, you know, full disclosure, that I have spoken to the county along with Mayor Hellman and the very folks that you worked with, Councilmember Kohler, were really interested in the fact that Fairfax is having this conversation. And they wanted to keep apprised of that as well. So there might be some movement yet in wherever this final situation lands. But I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves in that regard. And I think that the next step is to, for us to decide here if we, if we agendize this and have staff look into this and bring this back to us. But that's what I'm interested in. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, Councilmember Goddard?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, thank you to, thank you to everyone who spoke. It's been an extraordinary thing to watch Kurt and the DSA and their team really show up in the community. I've never really seen a campaign. Well, I did see a campaign around Victory Village that was really, really a visible, connect-with-the-people kind of campaign, which makes a huge amount of difference. I watched the way they spoke with people. I spoke with them at the Good Earth, and then we did have a meeting, several meetings for me to ask some questions. And I've been incredibly impressed with the thorough nature of what they're bringing forward, really appreciating the idea that respect forward, really appreciating the idea that respectfully looking at what we have in our tenants' protections and the Just Cause work that Barbara brought forth, and really talking about how we expand that, how we bring that into the modern time that will address some of the real egregious rent increase and intimidation that a lot of renters are feeling when they try to bring forward their grievances, really, in order to access mandatory mediation. And I think that we, at this point, need to revisit. I had some of the same questions. Barbara, the first question I asked is, well, who is the rent board? How is that established? Who administrates it? Who pays for it? And all of these things. But I keep hearing around the county in almost everything that we're dealing with, from homelessness to some of the environmental initiatives, such as the reusable foodware, that when we wait for the county, who should be doing things, we basically just lose time. And in this situation, we displace people, and we hurt people, and we hurt the environment. And so I have questions, and I will get them answered. But I would absolutely support moving forward to further explore how we can make this, is this a viable thing to do in terms of our resources? I do worry about staff resources. But I'm absolutely supportive of taking next steps, whatever they may be. We may need more learning. But I wouldn't feel that it is right to not open a window for this to start. And I would be proud that Fairfax could take a step like this, and maybe it could grow into a more multi-jurisdictional county-wide support net for this rent board. But I think we can invent some things within the confines of the law that allow us to support something that's going to help our renters and Fairfax. So thank you all for speaking and for educating me and for the presentation.
Thank you. Janet, did you want to speak before Councilmember Ackerman? I see your hand is up.
It is up, but I just wanted to remind you that at this point, what we need to do, because this was a presentation, is take some direction perhaps to bring it back. I believe it is on the draft agenda for April, but we don't want to get into too much discussion. The proper thing to do would be to direct staff to bring it back, where you can have a more open discussion about it.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Councilmember Ackerman?
Yeah, so I'll be brief, and I agree with what Janet said, that this was not intended as a full agenda item or action item. But just following up on what several councilmembers have said, in particular Renee was saying it would be nice if somehow the support for a rent control board, or whatever it's called, could be something that grows and that we could somehow get started with it, and it could grow into something that's more equitably distributed among the county and more efficiently done by one board rather than 11 or 12 boards in the county. I was trying to think of something like that as well, and just wanted to throw out the hope that possibly the county could help with something where we could come up, maybe through, well, I don't know how we would work it, but just a vision anyway, of some way of funding the rent control board that would start out by being funded by the jurisdictions that have it and the county that have rent control, which might be us only if we were to do this, but that the funding would be less as more jurisdictions added on, and maybe the county could help out at first, which I think would be an appropriate role for the county to help with this, so that the first jurisdiction doing it isn't just overwhelmed by the cost, but that the county's contribution would become less if more jurisdictions did it. So some sort of formula like that, that maybe could be worked out to somehow break this impasse that we seem to have found ourselves in, where one jurisdiction can't start it, and yet the county isn't ready to do it by itself. But anyway, I do think that it seems clear that we should continue this discussion. We will. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you. I want to thank everyone who showed up, and for our presenters this evening. So many thoughtful comments, so powerful and moving. I really feel like this concept is in alignment with our values as a community, and it's also supported by data. And so, does anybody want to make a motion? Are we hearing, at least from?
I don't think we need one.
Okay. I heard from four of us that we're in support of proceeding. I know we're going to talk about it likely at our strategy session next Friday, and we have it tentatively on the agenda for April. Go ahead, Janet.
Yes, I was just going to point out, it's already on the agenda for April. It's on the draft agenda.
Right. Anything else? Janet?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah.
May we have a break? I think we're going on four and a half hours.
Yes.
We haven't gotten to the consent calendar yet.
Yeah, I know.
Yes, maybe it's time for a break.
Okay, it's 10, well, I have two different times, 10:26?
10:24, I think.
You have 10:24.
According to the official internet-connected time, I believe.
Well, why don't we come back at 10:30?
Thank you.
Okay, we are back. Everyone here?
Since it's after 10 o'clock, Mayor, we have to at least discuss the agenda. I personally think we can finish with that continuance. I think you need a motion or not. I'm not sure if the clerk can tell us.
I'm sure. What continuance are you referring to, to the after-dining?
Yeah.
Yes, I think we can finish the agenda because we've...
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's after 10 o'clock, so we have to at least make some discussion of the agenda at this time.
I think we can continue, yeah.
I do, too.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, do we need a motion for that, or are we okay just to continue?
A motion to waive the 10 o'clock rule and move ahead with the agenda.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
May I do a roll call?
Sure.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard?
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutrano?
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I have an administrative question. The consent item from earlier, where does that fall on the now consent calendar?
Would you like me to answer?
Yes, I would.
I think you're talking about the special meeting that consists of one consent item, and we could do that consent item after you've considered the consent calendar for this meeting. So first, the consent calendar on the regular meeting, items 6 through 15, and then after you've moved on that, then we could open the consent calendar for the special meeting, just one item.
Okay. The council may approve the entire consent calendar with one vote. In the alternative items on the consent calendar may be removed by any town council or staff member for separate discussion and vote. The opportunity for public comment on consent calendar items will occur prior to the council's vote on the consent calendar. So any questions, or Councilmember Goddard? I think you're on mute.
Yeah, Barbara, go ahead. You were definitely first.
Oh.
Okay, I don't want to pull anything. I was hoping that Adam could give us a real brief on number 12, which is dealing with the supplemental budget allocation for the Sir Francis Drake work. I'm just wondering if he could just briefly talk about, since it's over quite a bit, what we had approved. I'm hoping he could just talk about how he and Jonathan brought in a number of project managers from different expertise, and also about the reimbursement that we're expecting. So maybe that's all I'd like, I think the public would like to hear as well.
Madam Mayor, would you like me to respond now?
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Kohler. Yeah, so just very, very quickly, at the time of the report was written, we had not gotten confirmation from the state. Your interim Public Works Director Jonathan Goldman has been in communication with the state, and with many of these types of projects, you're eligible for reimbursement up to 50% to 75%. But in this case, it's going to be eligible for 100% reimbursement. So yes, the $250,000 that was originally budgeted, that was the estimate. That was when we were starting to work with the information at hand. Obviously, as the work continued and the bills came in, that was the cost for the entire project. It was managed by three different engineers. You had your Public Works Director Jonathan Goldman, you had Miller Pacific with Scott Stevens, and then you had a third engineer that had an environmental expertise, obviously dealing with the creek, to provide that project management and oversight, working with, obviously, a very reputable contractor with Majora and Gelati. So we feel very confident. The applications have actually already been submitted by your interim Public Works Director Jonathan Goldman, and in roughly six months' time, we should see that reimbursement of those funds. So again, a project that would normally potentially take up to a year and a half to two, and you have to go through all the various environmental and permitting process, if this was not an emergency event. Your Public Works Director with the team that he was working with got this project done in two months, and obviously no loss of property, no loss of life on an event as significant as that. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to clarify that additional information.
Thank you, Adam.
Go ahead, Renee.
Yeah, it's actually a comment. I don't want to pull anything, but I wanted to speak to number 10, but I wondered if you want me to wait till after public comment on consent?
I want to go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to, really, I just wanted to acknowledge the work of Camille Espazito and of Michelle Gardner, and all the folks that have worked so hard on our communications, and just call out a few numbers for the public to hear. When I got appointed to council eight and a half, nine years ago, we had very few contacts in our system, and it was very, it was disturbing, to be quite honest, that we could not know physical addresses of folks. We had no contacts. I shouldn't say that. We had some contacts, but very few. And especially with all of our work and increased work and emergency preparedness, it became very clear that we need to know how to connect with people. So I just want to call out a couple of the numbers that Camille reported to us, our communications specialist. We have 4,004 individual constant contact subscribers, and we have 2,820, so 2,820 folks on our physical mailing list. It represents a huge increase. And when we launched the website in 2018, we had less than 2,000 users, and we've transitioned, when we transitioned to the new site, we've now got over 8,000 users, and that was as of mid-2020. So just a shout out to all the increased efforts, all the fine work being done in communications. We can always get better, but thank you to staff for getting us connected to our community. Yeah, gratefully.
Vice Mayor Cutrano, did you have something?
Just a quick question for Adam. Item 15, just for the public that's tracking it. We're losing Jonathan, unfortunately, but we are gaining a new interim Public Works Director. I'm wondering, when does Mr. Hamid Shamsapur start as that Public Works Director? And is there going to be any interruption of service if people have any calls or anything related to that? Is that going to be pretty quick for the public to engage with that staff member?
The answer is yes, but I would like to let your town manager answer your question.
Hamid starts tomorrow, so we're not expecting any delays. Very happy to see him start tomorrow.
Great. That's exciting. Anything else?
Madam Mayor, if I may, the clerk, I just wanted to note that those two items you called out, the item 12 and item 15, each have a supplement that was posted today and sent to the council. So there's additional information, and that's what you'll be considering with the consent calendar.
Thanks, Michelle. Okay, let's open the public comment on consent.
Okay. Any members of the public wish to comment on any item on the consent calendar?
I don't see any. I'm going to close public comment. Do we have a motion to approve items on consent?
Yes, I'm happy to make that motion, Mayor. And I just had some corrections I sent in the minutes to Michelle, so I just wanted those to be reflected in the motion as well. And also, a thank you to you and Councilmember Goddard for your work on Ross Valley Fire Board and getting that agreement squared away. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you just want to mention with the approval of the two supplements.
Sure.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Motion, Cutrano, second, Goddard. Michelle, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler?
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutrano?
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so moving on to the consent item from the special meeting, I guess that was item number one, the only one. Authorized Mayor Hellman to send in a letter of support of AB 2282, hate crimes, nooses, crosses, swastika. Michelle, are you going to offer the staff report?
I couldn't, Madam Mayor, but since it is a consent item, it's not required if you wanted to...
Oh, okay, I'm going to pull it. How's that?
Okay. Sure.
Seems important for the public to hear it.
Okay. Well, Mayor Hellman requested this item be added to tonight's agenda, and I believe it was part of a larger group called Noah Marin, who had brought this to the council's attention. Apparently, existing California law treats those hate crime symbols of nooses, crosses, and swastikas, it gives them all the same criminal penalties, and this Assembly Bill 2282 would amend state law to, I'm sorry, to give them the same penalties. They currently all have different penalties. I got that backwards. And so they would get the same... And, um, so they would get the same criminal penalties, and it would increase and expand the locations where those symbols are banned, to include K through twelve schools, colleges, cemeteries, places of worship, places of employment, private property, public parks, public spaces, and public facilities. And the, um, recommendation is to authorize Mayor Helman to send a letter in support of this proposed bill to its authors and also to the, um, the committee chair, the Public Safety Committee Chair, where it's going to have its first hearing.
Thank you. Okay. Um, do we have any members of the public? I'm gonna open the public comment on this.
I do see a couple of raised hands. First is Sandy Hancher. You're unmuted now.
Hi, Fairfax Town Council, Mayor Helman, Vice Mayor Chance Cutrano. Um, I am one of four members of Noah Marin. Um, uh, Noah Marin stands for Name, Oppose, and Abolish Hate in Marin. And we formed, our group formed specifically to do something about the, the, um, um, the young neo-Nazi who, who, um, stickered, um, swastikas on, uh, uh, in downtown Fairfax in November of two thousand twenty. And also, we were shocked when, uh, the district attorney, and that, that was, as you all know, that was, uh, Noah Moen, who grew up in Fairfax, videotaped that on his phone and in a twelve-minute video. Um, so we wanted to find out what, so the district attorney said that she didn't have enough evidence, and that to us was shocking. Uh, so we did, we launched our own research, and what we found out was that what that young neo-Nazi did was not illegal. It was absolutely legal, and that's why the DA couldn't press charges against him. And so we decided to change the law. And so a member of our group started writing an amendment to the law. And we met with, we called up and met with assembly members looking for someone to take the lead on this. And we found, um, Rebecca Bauer Kahane in the, in the East Bay. And we have, um, uh, I think it's twelve co-authors on the bill right now. And it's entered the process, it's just gotten a number, uh, it's just, um, uh, entered the process of becoming a law, and it started because of what we were all outraged about in Fairfax. And so we hope that Fairfax can be the first one to, uh, write the letter and send in the letter of support for AB two-two-eight-two. And I urge everybody to read this, um, this historic bill, and I'm just so proud of the work that we were able to do. Mark Solomons was going to, um, also speak to this. I'll lower my hand.
Thank you, Sandy.
And the next speaker is Mark Solomons, and you're unmuted now.
Thank you. So we're very happy Sandy could be here and speak to this. I don't know if Mark Levine is here at the moment, uh, or Erica Heimberg, but Mark was the person who really took the lead to figure out, uh, with some experience in the legislature, uh, that something could be done with the penal code, you know, let's do something about this. Our whole purpose of, uh, forming after Noah Moen's video was to, uh, to try and stop hate incidents and hate crimes here in, in Marin. So, we are here to ask you to support this proposed amendment to the penal code. It will unify how all three of the symbols, uh, swastikas, nooses, and desecrated crosses are treated as crimes. Um, and specifically, just to reiterate, it will make it illegal in a range of spaces where now it is legal, including schools. And this is across all three of these different uses of symbols. Schools, college campuses, public spaces, places of worship, cemetery, or places of employment. So now all three of these will be considered, uh, treated the same way. Um, Rebecca Bauer Kahane lives in the district where the neo-Nazi who came to Fairfax lives. So, that's a connection directly, and her grandparents are Holocaust survivors. So we really have a good, uh, champion for this bill. We had spoken to Mark Levine, and he became a co-author, so he, here in Marin, uh, is, is behind this. So, the letter to submit to the Public Safety Committee will make Marin and California safer from extremists and white supremacists. So I really want to thank Mayor Helman, members of the council, and town staff for reviewing this letter in such a short time period. We expect this to be, uh, reviewed as soon as, as, uh, March nineteenth, and that would be the first reading of the bill. Um, we really thank you profusely for, for bringing this to the council, because such urgency and advocacy reflects the type of effort needed to get this legislation passed. Uh, lastly, I just want to describe that talking with Stephanie on the phone, I could hear her smiling because it gives her pleasure to support the work of people in the community, and she referred to Margaret Mead. Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. Thank you all very much.
I don't see any further comment, any members of the public looking to comment.
Oh, see one more. Michael McIntosh, you're unmuted now, Michael.
Just wanted to weigh in on one little part of this. I apologize, I can't even find this on my agenda, I had to step away. But I've seen recently an uptick in anti-Semitic language discussion across the board. And I'd like everybody to think about what has benefited the world. And if you use the Nobel Prize as a basis, I think it's twenty-four percent, I actually thought it was much more, but twenty-four percent of all Nobel Prizes have been awarded to people of Jewish ancestry. So if you really think about it, the Jewish community has provided more for humanity than any other group. So as opposed to having some misplaced anger about something, I really think we should thank our Jewish community for all the benefits that we as a community get to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more comments? I'm not seeing any other hands. Okay, we'll close the public comment, um, and bring it back for deliberation. Does any of my colleagues have any questions or comments on this?
I do.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yeah, um, so my father was Jewish, and beyond my grandparents, there is no family. All were devastated in the Holocaust. I also worked for a woman who was in Auschwitz and was an interpreter at the Nuremberg Trials and saw many firsthand photographs from Auschwitz and other camps. I want to thank Mark and others and Sandy who worked really hard on this legislation. But I will say that, um, I'm an advocate for free speech, even the most reprehensible racist hate speech. And so, I can't support trying to change the law to do something against free speech, no matter how reprehensible I personally think it is. And I would urge folks to listen to Ira Glasser, who was the, um, ACLU Executive Director for thirty-two years, to hear his thoughts on free speech and why some of the most horrendous free speech have been protected in our country. So while I completely appreciate, and I personally hate these symbols, I, I don't support the legislation, so I won't be supporting, uh, sending this letter. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Goddard.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm, I'm just gonna express my gratitude, um, at the way that you all approached this. Um, you turned outrage into action. Um, I watched everyone and actually grappled along with you all in trying to understand how it could be that we had no, um, that we had no recourse, that the DA seemed to have no recourse, and so I just want to thank you for persevering and for getting to the bottom of something and making it change. Um, that's rare, uh, to stick with something when we have that kind of extreme level of fear, pain, and frustration. So, um, I absolutely support this legislation. We've reached a point in our world where we cannot tolerate any more hate. And I, I do believe there's a fine line between, if there's a way to separate hate and free speech in a way that isn't so damaging. There's, we see too much. So thank you for helping change the law.
Vice Mayor Cutrano.
Yeah, I, I wanted to echo the sentiments of, um, Councilmember Goddard in just gratitude and, and showing a path forward. I was, I was really grateful, uh, Mayor Helman, that you had invited the folks from Noah to speak to the Marin County Council of Mayors and council members about this legislation, uh, and also that, uh, District Attorney Fragoli, who was involved in this, was also there to share that she supports this as well. Uh, and it's just great to see that that system, uh, you know, at work. And, uh, just finally, I, I understand where, um, Councilmember Kohler's comments are coming from on free speech, and I really looked into that, that legislation and was reading it line by line and trying to see how the amendment, uh, to that, uh, code was gonna shape up. And I was surprised to see that it was just, you know, it was some minor expansions of what already is on the books, and it has a, an incredible impact, uh, a- as a deterrent. Uh, and so, yes, I'm, I'm, uh, grateful that, that all the work has been done, and I'm, I'm supportive of it as well. So thank you, Mayor Helman, for all your work on this as well.
Anything else? Okay, uh, I, I just wanted to, uh, remind, um, my colleagues and, and the community that the Racial Equity Social Justice Committee, you know, spoke at length about this, this incident and how to respond, and it was unanimously, um, um, requested or supported that we look into a local ordinance. And, you know, that became a dead end because, you know, state code supersedes local. And, um, I, I'm just, you know, the word inspired is used a lot, but I am so inspired by this small group of citizens that have just been working away at this so diligently and obviously so effectively. I just really applaud your efforts, and, um, uh, I just thank you. So, um, with that, does anyone have a motion?
I would like to make the motion. I do not have the staff report in front of me, but I would like to make a motion to authorize Mayor Helman to, um, sign a letter and send it in support of the proposed legislation. Could you fill in?
A letter in support of AB twenty-two eighty-two.
Thank you very much.
And I'm, I'm happy to second that.
Okay, um, we have the motion, Goddard, and the second, Cutrano. Michelle, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
No.
Councilmember God, uh, Goddard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutrano.
Yes.
And Mayor Helman.
Yes.
That's, uh, for one, the vote, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, moving off the consent calendar now that it's eleven PM, uh, we are moving on to the public hearing. Item number sixteen is, um, we are, um, I'm just gonna read this, uh, adopted resolution denying the application for a commercial medical cannabis permit, design review permit, and sign exception permit for a cannabis storefront retail or adult-use retail delivery-only business at nineteen-thirty Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. The applicant, element seven, Fairfax Remedy. So, we already had public comment. We opened and closed public comment already on this topic. Um, and so, um, I don't know, are, is Linda, are you delivering, or Janet, are you?
No, I'm, I'm gonna do it, Mayor Helman.
Thank you.
Okay, so at the February meeting, February second meeting, uh, the majority of the council directed us to, um, come back with a draft resolution denying a commercial cannabis business permit, design review permit, and sign exception permit for a medical cannabis dispensary, adult retail, delivery-only business at nineteen-thirty Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. The applicant is element seven, Fairfax Remedy. And the council right now is in the deliberation stage on this matter. You have the, a public hearing, you've taken public comment, and you've closed the public comment portion. You're still in the deliberation stage. And so we're picking back up again where we were at that last meeting. And we brought forward a draft resolution for your consideration. I have three changes to this draft resolution that I'd like to read into the record right now, if I may. Uh, the first change that I recommend is on page two, and it's under number one. If you, um, look at it, I will read through the first part because it's right about halfway through the paragraph. Although the council previously approved the general location in and around nineteen-thirty Sir Francis Drake Boulevard as potentially appropriate for storefront cannabis business, um, since A, the location is outside buffer areas surrounding sensitive uses, and B, the council determined that Fairfax, a town with a population of seven thousand six hundred and five, could support a second cannabis business. I would place a period right there and remove, based on the belief that other Marin County communities would approve their own local cannabis businesses. Uh, continue deleting this has not happened and, and then pick up with, since there is no other brick and mortar cannabis location in Marin County, it appears the town of Fairfax potentially could shoulder the traffic burdens of Marin County residents, and so on. To the end of that paragraph. The second change I recommend is, in the second paragraph, it's the two I section. And I would start that, two small I's, with, some council members and community members expressed concerns regarding the anticipated amount of traffic detailed in the submitted traffic study, and believe it does not adequately reflect the likely traffic impacts the proposed use would generate. So there's a deletion of does not, um, and an insertion of and believe it does not. The third change I would recommend is in number three, on that same page, to the first sentence to start, the area surrounding and including the location is being considered during the current housing element update as an area where the council desires to permit future higher-density housing in order to, and continuing on. So, um, those are the three changes I recommend. This resolution is now before the council in their deliberations for consideration for adoption, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Vice Mayor Cutrano.
I don't have any questions, but if, um, we're at the tail end of this, I'm, I'm happy to, to make a motion, um, to approve that resolution with, with those, uh, changes that have been read into the record by our town attorney.
I would second that motion.
Motion, Cutrano, second, Ackerman. Michelle, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
No.
No.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutrano?
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes four to one.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to item 17, uh, adopted res- resolution dismissing as moot an appeal of a planning commission denial of a conditional use permit and formula business conditional use permit for a medicinal, for, excuse me, medical cannabis storefront retail, adult use, retail, delivery only business at 1930 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard.
And that one is me as well.
Great.
Yes. So, um, also at the last meeting on the agenda was an appeal from a planning commission denial of a formula, uh, business, uh, use permit for the same establishment, element seven Fairfax remedy, 1930 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. And, um, this particular, um, item goes hand in hand with the one we just, but had, the previous item. So that when you deny based on code section, Fairfax Municipal Code Section 5.56.070D, the commercial cannabis business permit, design review permit and, and accompanying, uh, sign exception permit, uh, you render moot the formula business use permit because it takes the commercial cannabis business permit in order to be able to establish the business. And, um, so there's nothing you could do with a formula business use permit at this location because you don't have the commercial cannabis business permit that would enable you to start a business there, start this particular business there. And so, um, this entire appeal is really moot. There's, there's no reason to, to hear it because of the action that you had just prior, that denial passage of 20, 22-15. So we prepared a resolution 22-16 and provided that for the council's consideration. And that dismisses the appeal from the planning commission action as being moot because of the denial of the commercial cannabis business permit. And, um, I do however, recommend that you go ahead and open the public hearing and take public comment on this because, um, people are allowed to speak on every item on the agenda. And unlike the item we just had that had a public comment period, this one has not had a public comment period. So we should go ahead, take public comment, but the resolution 22-16, and I would note a correction to the number on the resolution. It's not 2021, it's 2022-16. Is, um, available for your consideration. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions before we open the public comment? Go ahead, um, councilmember Kohler?
Yeah, just one, um, and maybe this is inconsequential, but I do not see anyone from element seven on the attendee list. So if the appellant is not here, would we even need to take public comment? Just a question.
You should, you should.
And then I do want to make one suggestion that I'll make after public comment. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, I'm going to open the public comment. Please raise your hand if you'd like to comment on this item number 16, or excuse me, 17. I'm seeing no hands raised. Going to close up. Okay. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, Mark, you're unmuted.
Thanks, but I'm still at two minutes, huh? With other people behind me. Uh, I'd like to thank Barbara for having done due diligence, uh, years ago and being the only person on the town council who actually went to a dispensary. You know, people came up with a lot of, uh, examples and scare tactics, uh, at the last meeting. It was kind of like watching, uh, Reefer Madness on steroids. I contacted people I know in Colorado who have two teenage daughters. And Colorado has no plans to massively change the legislation that they have. There's constantly tweaking going on and they expected that to continue. However, there is no mass hysteria, uh, that was presented, uh, by people at the last meeting. Actually, if you have a dispensary, you actually know what you're getting. If you don't have a dispensary, you don't know what you're getting. It's safer to go to a dispensary than it is to buy it on the mark on the street. And obviously teens who are having trouble with this are already having trouble because they're getting stuff on the street. You're much safer having a dispensary. And the thought that if they were to see a marijuana dispensary sign would cause permanent psychological damage is pretty absurd. And I'm really surprised that so many of you buy that. I think that you would have been much better served granting the dispensary to the local people who wanted to ha- take the money that would have been profit and put that into teen abuse programs.
Thank you, Mark. Your time is ended. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark. Okay, closing the public comments. Bringing it back. Barbara, you had a?
Yeah, there was something I was going to suggest, um, given that element seven has spent a considerable amount of money working through this process since, I think it was January 2020 and they had to do additional studies. I would like to make a motion, regardless of where we go on this, because I think there's only one way to go, that we refund their appeal fee. It's a small amount of money, it's $625. And, um, I think it might provide some goodwill as far as, um, we don't bear them any ill will. We just, um, members of the council decided to go another way for various reasons that were in the findings. And I'd be happy to, um, add that to the motion and I'm happy to make the motion. Um, but one clarification, Janet, what is the correct number of the resolution now? Janet, what is the correct number of the resolution? I don't have it.
Sorry, 2022 dash, 2022 dash 16.
Actually, can I just make a small correction? This is the clerk. The, the council conventions are a little different from the planning commission, so we just say 22. We don't say 2022.
I see.
Okay, so I'll make, I'll make this motion. As the council adopted, wait a minute, I don't know what that resolution number was. That's the previous resolution.
Is dash 15.
Okay, as the council adopted resolution 2215, denying the commercial cannabis business permit application from element seven slash Fairfax remedy. The council, I'm making the motion to adopt resolution 22-16, dismissing as moot the applicant's appeal of the planning commission's denial of the conditional use permit and formula business conditional use permit for a medical cannabis storefront retailer slash adult use delivery, retail delivery only business at 1930 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard and to refund the applicant's appeal fee of $625.
I'll second.
Motion Kohler, second Goddard. Michelle, can we a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Um, councilmember Ackerman?
Yes, and thank you to, uh, councilmember Kohler for that suggestion. As a gesture of goodwill.
Councilmember Goddard?
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutrano?
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 18 is continued until April 6th. Um, our regular agenda. Item 19, mid-year budget review and approved mid-year budget adjustments. Um, Michael, are you still awake? He's still with us?
Yeah, I've had, I've had a pot of hot coffee.
Oh!
Oh, Michael.
You're amazing.
I'm going to be up all night.
I'm here for it. I'm looking forward to this.
All right. Okay, well, um, uh, as you recall, last May, we, uh, presented the council with a budget that was adopted, uh, in July and, uh, we're seven months into the year right now and, and it's our, our policy to, to take, take a look, see at the, uh, budget to see where we're at. Um, and where we're likely to be at year end, which, uh, you know, you think is June, but really our revenues and expenses co- come in all the way or are paid all the way into September for, uh, things which affect June. So, you know, we're looking at a, a long period here of, of, of projections. So, um, Michelle, can we do a, a, a PowerPoint here?
Yes, Director Vivek. Just one moment, please.
All right. So, uh, so this is my mid-year, uh, budget reporter, as I like to call it. Uh, the state of the finance address. You've got to have a little humor at 11 o'clock at night, right? So, first slides, first slide, please. So, uh, first, the summary that we've got here, basically the good news is that our revenues, we're projecting those to, uh, be, exceed what we budgeted last May by about $499,000. That's about a 4.4% increase. Uh, our expenses, we're projecting to exceed budget. In other words, we're going to spend more than what we budgeted by about 378,000, which is about 3.2% over, mostly because we, the general fund is going to be called upon to cover the expenditures that we've had for that sinkhole and also for, uh, additional CIP that we've got. Um, so in, in some, in, at, at the bottom line is going to be that the adopted budget that we, uh, passed last July, uh, which originally projected that the general fund was going to have a deficit of about 615,000 is likely to be about 120,000 better than that, uh, with a deficit of only 494,000. Next slide, please. So this, uh, I don't expect you to absorb all of this. This is basically a summary page of what I go through in order to project what the budget, uh, or budget numbers are, are going to be. Uh, in some cases, I, I start with, uh, January and track month by month through, uh, June. Uh, oftentimes using last year's actual numbers that we received during similar periods and, and or going through and calculating, uh, what numbers are going to be based on, uh, well, things, as an example, TEATR uh, is the plan that we use to get our property taxes. And I know that when I get a prop- the property taxes in December, that that's 55% of what we're going to receive. So I, I can calculate up what we're going to be receiving for the rest of the period with a high level of confidence. So anyway, you can see down in the lower, um, right-hand corner that, uh, our original budget was 615,000 and that our, our net for the year is going to be 494 by my projection. Next slide, please. So a- as, as to the revenues, uh, the 499,000 in your staff were, uh, went, went too far. There we go. Uh, so the revenues, uh, are, are going to be higher mainly due to our property and sales tax revenues. Um, the, these revenues, uh, are 89% of the revenues that the town is going to receive. So, uh, I have a high level of confidence that, uh, you know, based on the numbers, uh, that the county has given us and that our, uh, sales tax, uh, company Avenue, which used to be Munis, Muni Services, that, uh, they're projecting that we're going to be receiving about, uh, 2% more in property taxes. Our VLF, which is vehicle license fee, property tax, and LOO is going to be about 55,000 higher than we projected. And sales taxes is going to be about 15% higher or about a quarter million, 258,000 higher. The, the projection that they gave us last year was, uh, was lower, was lower than what, what they gave us about six months later. And these are based on our, our actual experience. So, uh, that's, that's really good news for, for the town that the sales taxes is coming in better. And most of that's due to our district sales tax revenues that are coming in from other surrounding areas, internet sales, et cetera. Part of this is probably because the, uh, you know, the extended, uh, COVID lockdown has meant that a lot of people are still buying things on the internet and doing that sort of thing. Um, next slide, please. So, um, because property taxes is going to be a little bit higher, we also are going to see a little bit more revenue from our, uh, collected on the revenue, uh, from Fund Six, Retirement Fund. We'll see about 20,000 more there. Also, our building and planning revenues have been coming in really good. Uh, we're at about 64% received, uh, as of January 31st. So I'm projecting that we've probably at this rate have another 100,000 of revenues coming in, uh, for that. Next slide. So, but it's not all positive, uh, revenues. We're, uh, we're going to be probably under budget for our fines and licenses and rents and, uh, interest. Fines and licenses, uh, is less, you know, I would, I would say, well, maybe we need more speeders or violations, but you know, if we've got better citizen behavior, that's its own reward, even if, even if we don't get the money. The business license revenue is down and I suspect that, uh, that may be because, uh, businesses, uh, that have, that are no, either no longer around smaller businesses, home businesses, whatever, perhaps because of COVID. Uh, our interest revenue is probably going to go down. I noted that the, uh, life interest rates continue to fall, even though I thought they might turn around last, uh, last year when we did the budget. Uh, they've, they've gone down by about 50% from what we had a year before. So you can see the progress there of what's been happening in interest rates. I think when, with the Fed increasing their rates, that, uh, we may see the, the, uh, returns from life recovering. We've had a higher balance in the life account, in part because we got our ARPA funds, which are parked up there. We have, uh, just about $6 million in our, in our life account, but we're still earning less than we did with a lower balance last year. So rental facilities, that we're going to see a lower revenue from that, uh, in part because the lockdown has been, has been longer than I think we projected it would be last July. And also because, uh, we're projected, uh, with closing the pavilion, et cetera, for repairs that we won't see the revenues that we projected, uh, uh, last year. Next slide, please. So, um, with expenditures, uh, I project that the rev- that the expenditures are going to exceed budget by about 378,000. Um, the biggest reason for this is going to be what the general fund is contributing towards, uh, anticipated CIP. anticipated CIP and emergency repairs. We've got $440,000 for the Sir Francis Drake Sinkhole. Good news is that, as we've heard tonight, we may receive a reimbursement for that. I'm being prudent in saying, until I see the cash in the bank, it's coming out of the general fund. So, we're gonna transfer money to the Capital Project Fund to cover that, so we don't have a big deficit at June 30. Also, there's $60,000 that we're projecting that we're gonna be spending for the transition of the community center for, for, for a planning center. The good news is that the departments themselves have, are, are looking like they're gonna come in under budget by about $111,000, which is a little less than 1%. Next slide, please. So, most of the departments are gonna be under budget. I'm, I'm projecting that, you know, we're, we may have as much as $180,000 in some, but in some departments. And, you know, smaller amounts. This, this number is really hard to nail down. Again, these expenditures are gonna be, we won't know the, until the dust settles in September, what the expenses are actually gonna be. And, you know, some department head somewhere along the way may decide to spend the rest of his budget, if he, if he realizes that there's money left in, in there. I don't, I'm, I'm really proud of the departments for not, not doing that kind of thing. I've seen that in other places. But, next slide, please. So, we do have some budgets that I'm projecting. That's just a projection that they're gonna be over budget by June 30. They may look at this and say, I can't spend as much by June 30 and be under budget. Or they may, we may find that they're, they're, they continue to spend at the same rate that they've got. So, we've got several departments that, you know, the, that were having higher demand for the services. And we've had certain things, like in street maintenance, where we had the sinkhole on Broadway and other things that we didn't really expect to have that have happened. In recreation, there's a projection of more expenses. But, I caution people to look at that and recognize that there's also $25,000 more of revenues that we're projecting for recreation programs. And also that a lot of these expenses are gonna be covered by Measure J monies, which are not general fund revenues. So, I don't expect the revenues to match and completely what the, what the expenses are. So, I'm projecting that most, all of these overages in the, in these, on this page, can be covered by under-budget amounts on, on the previous page. And that the interdepartmental transfers can, you know, resolve or, or balance our budget without having to resort to additional appropriation. Next page, please. So, within the other categories of expenditures, our personnel costs are, which is 44, 45% of our budget. We're looking at that to be tracking right on budget at this point. As of Jan, January, we're at about 57.6% spent, which is within 1%, of what we're expecting. The costs are likely to increase over the, over the last five months, because we do have some additional staff positions being, being currently filled. And we'll, we'll, we, we budgeted for most of these, though. The side letter payment that we did in August was not budgeted. It's gonna, it, it does contribute to somewhat higher costs, but it was a one-time expense back at that period. So, I don't see the expenses, you know, being entirely increased at the same rate because of this one-time payment. Good news, our healthcare costs have contributed to some savings. We budgeted that we were gonna receive six, have a 6% increase. In January, it ends up being only about 5.3% on, on Kaiser, which is about 92% of the employees are participating in that, in that plan. Next, next slide, please. Our capital improvement projects are under budget. Normally, we've seen that most years. We don't require any mid-year budget adjustments at this point, other than the ones that you're making as you adopt projects. Tonight, you, you've increased the budget for the sinkhole project. And so, we don't need to do anything special with the mid-year budget for that particular expense. So, our adopted budget said that we would spend about $5.4 million within Fund 51, 52, 53. And even if we don't spend that kind of money by June 30, we will be, because they're capital projects, we'll be carrying those projects over and rebudgeting them in the next fiscal year. Next slide, please. So, my recommendation is that council receive the report and the presentation. There's no additional appropriation that's gonna be requested. Any department budget adjustments can come from our expense savings and increased revenues at the discretion of the town manager at, at year end. So, last, last slide, please. Any questions?
Looks like Councilmember Kohler has her hand up. And, yeah.
Just, well, I guess one point, you mentioned Measure J, that's the old one, where Measure F, I think, was.
Absolutely. Thank you for correcting that.
Yeah, but that's, you know, we get all confused with all these letters. But, I noticed the police budget is under about $181,000. I know our police chief probably went to bed, which is great. But, I, I know he has a new hire, Shelby, that we're gonna get presented soon, hopefully. But, do you know what that's attributed to? I know he's been working really hard for savings, but do you have?
I've been, I've been working with Rico on, on the budget. I projected it based on historical amounts. He, he projects based on different calculations. He's figuring that he's gonna use his overtime, that he's gonna use all of the things in there. So, we approach it from a, a different standpoint. Yes, there's a difference. If you calculated it, you'd probably come up with a different number. The key here is that we're gonna be $120,000, I'm projecting, under budget. So, even if he does come in with a full budget, I think that there's still, we're still gonna fall within the same scenario.
Okay, well, I mean, that's great news, and I know he's been working really hard on that. And thank you for working with him on that, Michael. Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Goddard.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. I just have a few questions. Mostly on the first page of the staff report and some of the things you point out. When you're talking about, this is in the one, two, third paragraph, you talk about the state COVID-19 relief. Yeah, the reliefs received from the state is not in the revenues, but it's designated to Fund 52. Is that the ARPA funds?
No, 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 the, the.
I'm, that's where I'm confused.
Yeah. The, the, I think what you're making reference to is the sinkhole, which is in, which is in the Capital Projects Funds. But, because we don't have an offset in revenue at this point, there's general fund monies will go to cover then. Is that what we're?
Yeah, no, I think I didn't put this in context. It's, it's about.
The third paragraph under discussion, right? It says.
Oh, on the actual staff report?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, it says it should be noted that the COVID-19 relief received from the state is not included in the general fund revenues, but rather designated to a special Fund 52.
Right, yeah. We, 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 we spend our, the monies that we're using to, to do COVID-related cleaning, janitorial supplies, et cetera, is actually a line item within Fund 52 for COVID expenses. So, a lot of the COVID expenses that we would expect to see in the general fund are not, are not in there. They are actually over in the, the Emergency Fund, which is Fund 52.
Okay, are there multiple Fund 52s? Forgive me for not knowing, because when you were just showing us a slide of the.
Yeah. Fund, Fund 52 has many projects in it. As an example, Forest Avenue, that we did all of the work on up there when the storms happened, comes out of Fund 52. So, that's really for emergency work and disaster-type expenses. So.
Okay.
Other, the other Capital Project Funds, 51, 53, are for our street projects, bridge projects, that sort of thing.
Okay, great. And so, where are the ARPA funds? I can't remember. Do we get, did we get?
We have a, we have a special revenue fund set up for that one. Fund 25, I believe it is, which is for federal stimulus funds. And so, it, it's, it's, it's over there and considered in the same way that we consider gas tax, the monies from TAM, et cetera. They fall into a category of special revenue funds.
Okay, great. I have two more quick questions. One is, is it possible to differentiate the sales tax that's coming in from the internet sales and the places from afar versus our locally-generated sales tax?
Very possible. In fact, that's the kind of information that we get from Avenue when they give us breakouts of, of reports. I can have them generate something for you that, that shows that. They're, they're more than happy to run special reports for, for us.
I, I think that would be really important information when we talk about our economy growing. What, what does that mean? And, you know, from where is that coming? Last question. You mentioned the $60,000 for the transition of the community center. So, that's actually something I haven't heard about.
Okay. I, Adam, you wanna, you wanna share the, share the news on that one?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think just the terminology might be what's confusing. It's, it's the, the community center and the, the challenge we have with staff here. So, we're, we're looking to move the building and permit and planning staff into the community center, along with Sean Yur, our climate action coordinator, and, and really open up that front counter, so as people come forward to review their applications and talk to staff, be it the building official, be it our, our planning staff, or even, or engineers for that matter, when they're looking to review permits and applications, will actually have the space to do that. And then over on this end, and, and my recommendation is that your finance director is probably the most important person next to the town clerk, but the most important person to the, to the new city manager, in this case, the new town manager. So, having finance and the finance, having the finance department and the city manager and the city clerk all in the same building, obviously will help, 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 help the team function more effectively. So, that, that's the plan that we've talked about a few months ago. And we're moving forward into creating also professional workspace that has, you know, that, that provides the equipment and the, and the needs for, for our team. So, that's what Michael has added into the, into the budget.
So, there are going to be certain expenses that are required for upgrading the community center. It has to be ADA accessible, places where there's sliding glass, it's gonna turn into doors. We have to upgrade phones, electric lines. There's, there's, there's expenses other than just packing up stuff on one side and moving it over to the other side.
And I would, and I would respectfully say, you need to do that, even if you didn't do the move.
Yeah.
You know, and so, you know, it just makes sense with the growth of the staff and the, and the operational needs, that this was, this, this is a good opportunity to, to really look at our space.
Okay, thanks for clarification.
Any other questions?
It was abundantly clear, and I'm very happy with the information.
Can I just ask one more quick thing? So, Michael, when you provide that sales tax breakdown, for those of us, we need to remember that the internet and the car purchases and other places that are captured are only on that three-quarter cent, right? So, it's not on the entire sales tax. So, it may look not as big as what you think, because you'll be looking at sales tax as a whole. And then that additional piece that we bring in because we have our own tax, is that correct, Michael?
Yeah, our 1% tax.
It's three-quarter cent.
Well, the one, the Bradley Burns, which is the, you know, the base one that we've always had, covers sales that are generated from within the town. So, if somebody goes to, without that district tax, if somebody went and bought a car in Marin, or, you know, in San Rafael, we wouldn't get, we wouldn't get the base sales tax. But, that's, that three-quarters picks up things that are, where they've identified the buyer as being within Fairfax. So, the internet is a big one. All the purchases on Amazon, Macy's, those are all big ones that we get taxes on. And then the car dealerships.
Okay, so that's Measure C, and it's probably better not to call it a district tax. It's our town tax, just because I know you get district tax, but most of us know it's our little separate town tax. Thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to Pippa Comment.
I see what end. Yes, Michael McIntosh, you're unmuted now.
Thank you. My first, for my question, I'm hoping Michael can backtrack in his screen presentation to the second to the last screen, please. Which is right before the questions.
That would be Michelle. I'm not in charge of that one.
One before this one, please. Okay, thank you. I just want to take a picture of that. I'm hope, let's see, hold on a minute. I'm in the description of town at year end. Okay, received. I'm sorry, possibly it's the one beforehand. Of running expenses. Where my interest is, I'm really glad to see that Michael has done a great job. And personally, I like Michael for managing our town finances. I believe in last year's budget, off the top of my head, it showed gross revenues or projected revenues of approximately $358,000 on the user's utility tax. So, myself, I look at my utility users' tax, which has a legal, that's billed at 4% that has a legal cap of $360 on an annual basis. And over the last five years, where they should have been charged $1,800, the town of Fairfax has collected now in excess of $12,000 from me. So, especially when we have the rent control issue, looking at this for additional burdens, that I see these monies being taken from the town improperly. And what's really sad is I even requested that money back, which falls into your guideline for even that current year and the prior year. And I paid you a check of $360 for that legal cap, which you accepted in cash for the last year, and then I paid you in advance for this current cal, for some of your fiscal year, which you took the check and cashed. And I've spoken to P Gene about this. P Gene has told me that most. P Genea has told me that most towns tell them when they hit the three hundred and sixty-dollar cap to quit billing it. They've said that they can't not bill it, and that the town of Fairfax actually expects that mon- money on a monthly basis, so that they can have their funds right away. So when I look at three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, I do have to question how many other citizens have, excuse the term, because it's very offensive, the town of Fairfax stolen their money, as they have done to me. So obviously, these questions, and I do.
I've let you go. Twenty seconds over. Could you please wrap up? Thank you.
I certainly will. I, I did give a FOIA to this, and I've had four deaths in my family, so I've been kind of busy. But I will follow this up with the Attorney General if I can't get an appropriate answer from the town, because I think it's really in bad form.
Thank you so much. All right, I'm going to close public comment as I don't see any other hands raised. Are there any other questions or comments before, for Michael?
Just a big thank you.
Yeah.
You're very welcome.
Such a good one. Such a good presentation. Thank you.
Pretty slides, too.
Yeah, exactly.
Adam, Adam got, got me to do that. He's, he's the one that, he's the one who turned us on to, uh, PowerPoint presentations.
Ah, yeah, PowerPoint is fun if you have the time.
Okay, moving on to item number twenty, which we actually continued.
Yeah. We're well past consent now. Way past it.
Okay, um, Town Manager's Report. We won't expect much, don't worry.
Yeah.
Win the bet or lose the bet, Heather?
Uh, I lost, not by much. Um, so, uh, yeah, um, thank you for, uh, this wonderful meeting, and I, um, due to the lateness of the hour, I will not give you any, any more report.
Okay, well, welcome again. Um, future agenda items. Anyone? I'm pulling that up right now. One second. So we continued outdoor dining, so that will now fall on the list for April sixth.
We're going to have to figure out how to, how to move some stuff off of April sixth, but.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of good stuff on the, on the list. It seems like we've captured a lot of stuff there.
I'm just looking at it. Okay, does anyone have anything else for, uh, beyond? No? Okay. All right, then, um, we're going to adjourn the, this meeting in memory of Ernie Legnito and Jane Parisi.
Could I add one, Mayor?
Sure.
Um, well, along with your father. Um, I'm so sorry, but I would like to add Bill Sims. I sat with Bill Sims on the Community Media Center Marin Board for eight years. He's also a member of the DCCN. He passed away Saturday, and we're all very much saddened by his loss. Um, thank you.
Thank you. And, um, with that, I will adjourn the meeting, and I will see you all in person next Friday, the eleventh, at our strategy session, which is a public meeting. Thank you and good night.
Good night, everyone.